Good morning, Slone Water.
Good morning, Commissioner Caldis. This morning's panel has two witnesses from the Department of Veteran Affairs. Kate Pope, who is the Deputy President of the Repatriation Commission, and Justin Mean, rather, who is Executive Director of the Strategic Planning Unit. Might the witnesses be sworn or affirmed?
Kate Pope, do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Justin Mean, do you solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Operator, can you please display the tender list? Commissioners, I tend to the documents in the bundle in the manner in which they are described in the list.
Thank you, so they'll be accepted and allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, the focus of the panel this morning is the Veteran Wellbeing Programme that was announced by the federal government in 2019. The topics we propose to explore with the panel are threefold. Firstly, the objectives of the programme. Secondly, why particular locations were selected to have a veteran wellbeing centre. And thirdly, the perspectives of the Department of Veteran Affairs with respect to how the criteria for and conditions of the grant facilitate the objectives of the programme itself. Before I commence with the substantive evidence, can I just ask the members of the panel to introduce themselves, starting with Ms Pope? Ms Pope, can you state for the commissioners your full name and current role?
My full name is Catherine Gay-Pope, now known as Kate, and my role is the Deputy President of the Repatriation Commission, and I have responsibility for the policy and strategic functions of DVA.
And Ms Pope, am I correct that an aspect of your role is as executive sponsor of the wellbeing programme?
That's correct.
How long have you held that position for?
Since the, well, no, that's not quite right. In 2019, there was a Deputy Secretary who had responsibility, and I was the first Assistant Secretary responsible beneath him. And with a change of function in about 2021, I think, I became, that would have been, sorry, I'm muddling up the dates, I don't know. But at some point, I became the more senior responsible officer, but I've been involved since the inception.
Okay, and thank you. Then in terms of your current role as executive sponsor, could you just give the commissioners an overview of what that role involves?
It really means that I'm the senior executive to which the team works in terms of the implementation of the veteran wellbeing centres. I have responsibility for signing off submissions before they go to the Secretary and the Minister in relation to the programme, and assisting with high-level decision-making.
So would it be correct to say, Ms Pope, that you are the most senior person within the department with responsibility for the implementation of the veteran wellbeing programme?
Yes.
Mr Mean, if I can turn to you, could you please state for the commissioners your full name and current role?
Justin, Mr Mean, I'm the Executive Director of the Strategic Planning Unit.
And how long have you held that position?
I've held that position... I've held that position since February of 2019.
And am I correct that an aspect of your responsibility with respect to the veteran wellbeing programme is as implementation lead?
That's correct.
And how long have you held that particular portfolio of responsibilities?
Since the inception of the programme.
And can you please give the commissioners a brief overview of your responsibilities with respect to the programme under that role?
So I manage the team day-to-day and ensure that they're delivering on what we need to deliver on. I chair panels, the assessment panels for selection, and I sign off milestones that must then be achieved under the contract.
So would it be correct to say then, in terms of selection processes, you're there talking about selection processes in terms of applications for grants of funding under the programme?
That's correct.
And then in terms of milestones, are you there talking about overseeing the implementation of grant agreements?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, if I can just turn to ask about the programme proper, am I correct that the Veteran Wellbeing Centre Programme was announced on about 24 April 2019?
That's correct.
And that was just prior to the federal election in May of 2019?
That's right.
And is it correct to characterise that announcement as essentially an election commitment?
That's correct.
Now, the announcement on 24 April 2019 identified the location for six wellbeing centres, namely Townsville, Darwin, Nowra, Perth and Wadonga, is that correct?
And Adelaide.
And Adelaide. To your knowledge, was the Department of Veteran Affairs consulted before the initiative was announced?
No.
To your knowledge, was any research or studies undertaken to provide data in relation to the establishment of those centres?
Not to our knowledge, no.
To your knowledge, why did the federal government choose those particular locations for funding for veteran wellbeing centres?
We're not aware.
Now, am I correct that the Veteran Wellbeing Centre Programme forms part of the department's 2020 to 2023 Veteran Mental Health and Wellbeing Strategy and National Action Plan?
Yes, it does.
When was that plan released?
I think in 2020, but I'm not 100% sure, I can't remember, I'm sorry.
But it was shortly after the Veteran Wellbeing Programme initiative was announced?
Well, it had certainly been announced because it was mentioned in the document, so yes.
Of course, yes. Operator, can you please display document dva.5007.0001.0011@0044? So I'm just going to take you to, this is obviously the National Action Plan, and am I correct that this part of the plan that's displayed identifies the priorities of the current strategy and how they're intended to be implemented?
That's correct, yes.
And is it correct to say that the objectives of these centres are to provide coordinated, innovative and flexible models of service delivery to reach as many veterans and their families as possible?
Yes.
Is that the main current programme or mechanism through which the department seeks to connect veterans and their families with ex-service organisations?
Well, no, I don't think so yet because it's only a relatively new initiative and not all of the centres are up and running at this stage. So the existing centres reach a very small percentage of the total veteran population at this stage. So I don't know whether I'd say it's the main means by which we reach veterans and families because there are a lot of other mechanisms available to the department. And it's not the intention that it's the mechanism for DVA to reach veterans and families, but more to connect the community to one another, so.
Are there any other current initiatives by the department to facilitate that end?
Well, for example, we have veteran service officers on 56 bases around Australia, either full-time or part-time or by visits, that are another way of reaching out to veterans and their families as they go through the transition process. That's just one example, but there are lots of other means by which DVA connects with their clients through our offices, through our phone systems, through our van offices and so on. So there's a whole range of ways we work with veterans and their families.
Could you give me an example of just one programme in the community, so not in the transmission, sorry, transition phase, in the community post-transition by which the department seeks to facilitate connection between veterans and their families and ESOS?
And ESOS. The connection between veterans' families and the ESOS is largely the responsibility of the ESOS themselves rather than DVA engineering or managing that process of connection.
But am I correct that this particular programme does seek to facilitate that as an objective?
In the sense that it provides the premises from which ESOS can operate, work together and connect with veterans and their families, yes.
And then that is directed as well to the objective as stated here about providing amongst other matters coordinated support and access to community and volunteer services?
Yes.
So would it be correct to say that once this programme is up and running, it'll be a fundamental plank of the department facilitating that connection between veterans and their families and ESOS?
Yes, I think that's a fair way to say that's what the programme aspires to be, yes.
Now, you are no doubt aware that there are many ex-service organisations in Australia. Does the department have any criteria for recognition of an ex-service organisation? For example, a definition of what are the essential characteristics of such an organisation?
I don't think there's a definition, and as I think you're aware, this is a very busy space. There are a very large number of ex-service organisations operating in Australia to support veterans and their families. There are a group of well-established organisations that are part of the, what we call the Ex-Service Organisation Roundtable, which meets on a regular basis with the senior executive of the department, including the secretary and usually the minister of the day at the time as well. And that's a way of facilitating connection and understanding the way that the...
So that's essentially a peak forum for particular organisations?
It's part of our national consultative framework, yeah.
But as you said, Ms Pope, it's a very busy space. And would it be a fair comment that there appears to be a lack of cooperation as opposed to, in some instances, competition between ex-service organisations that operate in that space?
There are examples of excellent cooperation and collaboration, but as is probably inevitable with the sector the size that it is, there are sometimes tensions and some competitiveness between organisations, yes.
And to the extent that there is that lack of cooperation between ex-service organisations, that that is a barrier to the effective provision of services to veterans and their families?
I think the way I'd characterise it is that the greater level of cooperation and collaboration would be to the benefit of veterans and their families, yes.
And would it be right to say that one of the issues this programme seeks to address is a greater level of collaboration between ex-service organisations to facilitate that better delivery of services?
It certainly has the means to support that and assist it, yes.
Yes. Now, I understand in 2019, Yarabie Consulting did an independent review of the grant operating model for the department. Are you familiar with that review?
Yes.
And did the department have regard to that review regarding the particular programme, the Veteran Wellbeing Centre Programme?
Well, not at the outset, no, because we weren't involved in the inception of the programme itself, so.
I'm talking though in terms of the implementation of the programme?
I'm sure it would have had a bearing, but I'm sorry, it was a while ago and I can't recall any direct link between that review, which was of our grant programmes, and the implementation of the veteran wellbeing centres, but I may just not be recalling.
When the grant programme was announced in 2019, was there a stipulation by the government as to the nature of the expenditure that would be eligible under the grant?
Not at the time that it was announced, but it was refined in the development of the grant guidelines and their approval.
And that was a process in respect of which the department had some input?
Oh, yes.
So if I can circle back around then, in terms of the implementation of the programme and the grants, was that review an aspect of the consideration of the department in making recommendations about how the monies would be expended?
I actually can't recall. It's quite possible it was, but I don't recall a direct connection.
Perhaps if I could assist, could I ask, operator, could you please display dva.5022.0002.0945? Ms Pope, as you'll see, this is a ministerial submission in relation to the appropriate consideration prior to the veteran, the budget process, rather, for the programme. Could I ask the operator to please turn to point 0953 of that document? Correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I understand that this is an attachment to the ministerial submission that is directed to outlining for the minister options the consideration in terms of how the programme will be implemented in terms of the funding.
No, I'm sorry, it isn't. The submission refers to the Veteran Wellbeing Grants Programme, and it was a separate grants programme being proposed, it's not about the wellbeing centres.
Okay.
It was a grants programme that was proposed, and the submission is about advice to the minister about that proposed grants programme. It's separate to the Veteran Wellbeing Centre Programme.
So if we could go back, if the operator could please go back to dot 0945. So the first recommendation there is that you advise of the Veteran Wellbeing Grants Programme funding option that you wish to explore for development in the 2021 budget proposal. Am I correct to understand then that's about a potential prospective funding option for the programme, not the particular five million dollar grants that we're talking about?
It's certainly not about the five million dollar grants, no. And only one aspect of this related to a potential for an aspect of this to be funding that the centres could have access to apply for in the future.
Could you expand upon that for the commissioners?
It's one of the recommendations there, I think I can't see it on the screen at the moment, but there was a recognition that there might be a need for further, I don't know if it's even there.
Is it correct to say that there was a recognition that there might be a need for further funding?
I actually think that that was actually subsequent to this submission, but there was the view that it might be desirable to have a grants programme that the centres could apply for in the future to fund programmes that they might want to deliver through the centres.
So a future funding programme for service delivery explicitly, okay. Now, if we can turn then back to a focus on the current initiative in terms of veteran wellbeing programmes, am I correct that that grant is essentially confined to monies for capital works?
It is to an extent, that's the main aim. And in some cases, the full five million dollars has been expended on a capital investment, but it can also be spent on operational expenses that go to the running of the centre. The explicit exclusion is it can't be spent on the delivery of programmes.
So am I correct in that respect that the grant guidelines say, for example, that the provision of services such as counselling, employment, support and veteran or family support is excluded from the terms of the grant?
That's correct.
So one example would be the cost of providing direct or indirect services to veterans and their families. That's not monies that can be expended under the grant?
That's right.
Why is that?
I don't know, except that the programme is a capital programme and those operational expenses go to the running of the capital investment.
Before you answer, and correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I understood from our exchange before, Ms Pope, that you indicated that the department had some interaction with the government in terms of making recommendations about how the monies for the grant will be implemented. Am I correct in understanding that?
In the sense that we worked to develop the grant guidelines and took them through the approval process across governments, yes.
And so an aspect of that was deciding whether or not it would be, for example, a capital infrastructure programme if there would be monies for operational expenditure or alternatively services?
I don't believe there was a debate about that because the five million dollars, when it was announced, was announced as a capital programme.
So that was a directive from the federal government?
I don't know that I would call it a directive exactly, Mr Mean might be able to...
I might be able to help with this. So one of the issues was this is a terminating measure, so it only went for three years. So to spend money on operational beyond three years was not possible because there's no money beyond three years. And the setting up of the centres would take several years. So the chance to use it on operational funding would be very limited under those constraints of the programme as approved by government.
Can you just expand for me and explain to the commissioners why the three-year term of the programme is an inhibitor for there being monies for the delivery of services as opposed to capital works?
So beyond that three-year period, there's no funding in the programme, so therefore there's no funding to spend on anything, including operational measures.
So from the inception, the department or the government doesn't want to set up a false expectation that it will provide money actually for the provision of services?
That's correct, yeah. The government approved a terminating measure of three years, so there's no possibility that could be extended.
And is it realistic to expect that the hubs or the veteran wellbeing centres will able to be self-funding in terms of the provision of services?
Yes, it's an expectation in the business cases put forward by the potential lead organisations that they set out how they will be sustainable into the future.
So it's a critical criteria for success in terms of the application process that the organisation is able to self-fund?
Yes.
And what will happen if after the end of the three-year term, a successful applicant for the programme isn't self-funding?
Well, we haven't got to that point yet, but Mr Mean sounded like he was taking a breath there, so he may wish to say something, but we haven't reached that stage of the programme yet. And there are, I guess, a range of things that could be addressed in that context, but Mr Mean may want to...
Is that a matter the department is prospectively looking to, given that it knows that it's a grant that's only for three years and obviously the intention is to facilitate services in the longer term?
Certainly, the department is concerned about sustainability, which is one of the reasons we added it to that list of criteria. So yes, we're concerned about that.
And in exploring the grants programme that we were talking about earlier, it's another way that we're looking at how we can support the centres into the future, but we're not looking to be this sole funder for those centres or for those organisations, and they are establishing sustainable arrangements going into the future, so.
But it is, but funding the delivery of services is, as you say, something that prospectively the department is looking at. Is there any, other than prospectively looking at it, are any commitments being progressed to provide further grants of funding? Or is it too early to tell?
We're probably not in a position to answer that question, but there are existing grants programmes that the centres could potentially apply for, although the amount of funding associated with those is not large.
Now, I just want to turn then to the sort of grant process itself. As we've said, it won't actually fund the delivery of services, but obviously it seeks to facilitate that objective through a number of means. One, I think you've just mentioned, Mr Mean, is grant opportunity criteria. So would it be correct to say, for example, that successful applicants must demonstrate that their centre will provide access to particular services?
Yes, that's correct.
Can I ask, operator, could you please display document dva.5022.0001.1074? So, Mr Mean, just to orient you, I'm just asking the operator to display the 2021 Grant Opportunity Guidelines, you're familiar with those?
Yes.
And, operator, could I ask you please to turn to point 1079 on the document? Can you see that description in front of you?
Yes.
So would it be correct to say that these are the types of services that as a department you want to see that a prospective applicant is able to provide if it is to be a successful applicant for a grant?
So yes, with the caveat that the particular organisation running the centre doesn't need to provide that. So yes, with the caveat that the particular organization running the center doesn't need to provide those, but they need to be provided by the center.
So they need to be able to facilitate the delivery of those services, if not themselves, as in effect a referral hub or connecting in with other ex-service organizations?
That's correct, yes.
So that's one mechanism through which the department seeks to facilitate the objective of delivery of services by a successful applicant. Am I correct that the conditions imposed on the grant are another mechanism by which the department seeks to facilitate that end?
They are. The nature of the grants being infrastructure grants do make it difficult to constrain the activities of the organization beyond the period.
And I just want to touch on that. So as I understand it, a sort of common condition imposed on the grant is that the building constructed must be used for a designated purpose?
That's correct, yes.
And that designated purpose is connected to the delivery of services or facilitating the delivery of services to veterans and their families?
That's correct, yes.
But as you've highlighted, there is a timeframe for which the building must be used for that designated use?
Yes, typically 10 years, yes.
So, sorry.
10 years?
10 years. And in some instances, for example, in the case of a grant that was made to RSL Launceston, that was announced in December 2021. My understanding is that period there was less than 10 years? It was two or three years?
Yeah, the grant amount was substantially lower, so we took a proportional approach to that designated use period.
And after the designated use period expires, can the recipient of the grant use that building for any purpose it wishes?
Yes, they could.
So there's no condition of the grant that it continue to use it for the provision of services or facilitating the provision of services to veterans and their families?
That's correct.
Does the department obtain any proprietary interest in capital infrastructure that is constructed as part of the grant?
The Commonwealth could. In this instance, we have not.
You have not, okay. Now, am I correct that another aspect of how the department seeks to oversee the delivery of services by successful recipients are what are called utilization reports?
Oh, reports from, yes, reports from the centers on the utilization of that center, yes.
So a report of that character is directed to getting data on the extent to which services offered through a particular center are being taken up by veterans or their families?
That's correct, but that serves multiple purposes as well as the Commonwealth connecting data. It serves purposes for the centers themselves and their communication.
Can you expand upon that?
So early in the program, the centers were really keen to make sure there was a strong evidence base. It's something that they talked about and asked us to essentially help them with. And so having a utilization report is an opportunity to do several things. It's allowed the centers to have a conversation, the Commonwealth to facilitate a conversation between centers about the meaning of different words, so there's a common usage. So for example, what is considered a client of a center, you know, in terms of recording that? And if you can get a commonality of understanding of what a client is, and if a center in one part of the country is recording a certain number of clients accessing a service and a center in another part is recording a different number of clients, they are able to then compare with each other on a like-for-like basis.
So it's allowing a standardization of data in relation to the uptake of services by people who come to particular veteran wellbeing centers?
That's correct, yeah.
Now, you touched on that comment, you touched on that issue just before, Mr Mean, of evidence-based provision of services. Can I ask, in that respect, beyond utilization reports, designated purpose conditions, does the department evaluate the actual services that are being facilitated by a prospective wellbeing center as part of its application process?
It assesses, the application often includes substantial details about the approach to service delivery. Sometimes it doesn't include the full details and that could be a milestone, a service delivery model. Might be one of the milestones that is paid for through the process. So yes, initially, but sometimes at a later stage as well.
So will there be an evaluation of the effectiveness of services that are provided through a veteran wellbeing center, either as a criteria in the application or as a condition of a grant?
That is not one of those criteria in those circumstances. But it's certainly something that the department is keen to understand what's successful and what's not around Australia and some of the centers, so they can get best practice.
So prospectively, it might be looking at success in terms of, for example, take-up of a particular program. But it's not presently part of the implementation process that the department requires or conducts itself an evaluation of the effectiveness of particular services that are provided or proposed to be provided through a veteran wellbeing center?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, can I ask, one of the criteria identified for a veteran wellbeing center in the grant application guidelines is that they provide case management services to achieve beneficial outcomes for veterans and their families. In that respect, can I ask, is there a requirement that the recipient of a grant abide by a code of ethics in terms of case management?
There are requirements in the funding agreement in relation to training and approach to engaging clients. But I don't know if there's a particular word ethics in there from memory.
And what is the nature of the requirement in relation to training specifically in the case management field?
The requirement is that the, because the organization runs the center, the requirement is the staff are appropriately trained to do all activities required by the center, which include case management.
And what is the criteria for appropriate training? Is it, for example, accreditation through a case management society such as, I understand there's a Case Management Society of Australia and New Zealand? Is that sort of an example of how the department retains control of appropriateness of case management?
I think because of the nature of the program, being essentially an infrastructure program that sets up these functions, we've put in a funding agreement, some requirements that organizations, you know, follow appropriate laws. These are fairly standard Commonwealth requirements and that the staff are appropriately trained. But we don't provide a specific detail on that, if you remember.
So would it be fair to say that the conditions of the grant state various sort of objectives or aspirations such as appropriate training, but there's no specific mechanism in the term of the grant to stipulate how those objectives are achieved?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, as I understand it, one of the objectives of the program is to achieve greater integration of government and non-government support for the wellbeing of veterans and their families. Are there any specific terms of the grant that are directed to achieving that objective?
Apart from the criteria we're looking at on the screen, which would often require organizations to engage with a wide range of other organizations, no, there's not.
So would it be fair to say that again, it falls into that category of sort of a broadly standard objective or aspiration, but not something in respect of which there are specific stipulations about how it's achieved? So if I could just give you one example. The terms of a grant wouldn't require not-for-profit organizations with which the wellbeing center interacts to have a role in the governance of the organization, the lead organization?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, I just want to turn to the process, if I could, of selecting a grant recipient for the Veteran Wellbeing Centre. Operator, can I ask, could you please display document dva dot five oh two two dot zero 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 one dot one one three one? Now, Ms Pope, am I correct that this is a ministerial submission that was made in July 2019? That's really directed to enabling the commencement or the implementation of, commencement of the implementation of the wellbeing program?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, it refers to three types of grant process. One is limited grant, one is limited or open grant, and the other is open tender process. Could I just ask you to outline for the commissioners the essential constituent elements of each of those processes?
Yes, I may ask Mr Mean to assist me with the detail here, but a limited grant, well, I'll start with open grant processes where a grant process is advertised and anyone can apply. And the full range of applications that come forward are assessed and decision is reached. In a limited grant process, it's in effect by invitation. So a determination is made of a range of suitable organizations that can be invited to apply. And then the same assessment process is applied to the generally smaller number of grants, but with a higher level of eligibility. And I can explain the reasons for the difference between those two if you, if you would like me to. An open tender process is conducted in a more, I guess, legalistic fashion and meets the requirements of a tender, a tender process as opposed to a grant process where the bar is a little lower, I would say. But Mr Mean may be able to describe the difference better between those two.
No, that's correct.
Now, that's a very helpful overview, thanks, Ms Pope. Now, you'll see under paragraph one on that page, it refers to there being a limited grant process for Townsville, Adelaide and Perth as per the election commitment. Am I correct to interpret that to mean that there had already been an executive decision as to who was to be the recipient for the grants in each of those locations?
That's correct, yes.
Who were the recipients for each of those grants?
So in the case of Perth, it was the West Australian RSL. In the case of Adelaide, it was the South Australian Government. And in the case of Townsville, it was the Oasis Townsville, but through the Queensland Government. So in the case of Adelaide and Queensland, they were both specific purpose payments to the respective governments.
And to your knowledge, was the department, was the department conferred with or was their consultations sought in relation to the appropriateness of making those limited grants to those organizations?
No.
To your knowledge, was there any process by which the government made an assessment of the appropriateness of making the grants to those particular organizations?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Sorry, okay. So when, can I provide a pre-explanation of this?
Of the specific purpose payments?
So the specific purpose payments are payments that are provided to the state government for the organizations to run those locations. So we provide money, we just have an agreement with the state government. So in that instance, we're agreeing with the state government that they will provide a building to the specifications and they're agreeing with the organization.
But would I be correct to say, so take for example Townsville. We heard evidence in the last hearing brought from Mr Calagari at the Oasis. Correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I understand in relation to the Oasis, there was an agreement between the state government and the federal government in relation to the provision of an effective building for which the Oasis could operate out of that. But an aspect of that agreement was the provision of five million dollars from the federal government towards that building being purchased and established.
That's correct, yes.
So to take the Oasis for an example, to your knowledge, was there any consultation engaged with, for example, the veteran community in Townsville, ESOs in Townsville about the appropriateness of those five million dollars being paid to the Oasis?
Not to my knowledge.
Do you have, was the department consulted about why each of those locations, Townsville, Adelaide and Perth, were appropriate locations for a veteran wellbeing center?
We weren't consulted, no.
Am I correct to say, in sort of distinction to that, in terms of subsequent locations that have been identified, there is a criteria that's utilized by the department in determining whether or not it would be appropriate to have a veteran wellbeing center at a particular place?
No, I wouldn't agree with that.
So there's no criteria by which the department determines where there should be a veteran wellbeing center?
The department hasn't determined where any of the centers should be other than that once a region is identified, we work to identify a lead organization in that area. But we haven't determined a location, if I can be clear.
Who identifies the region for a veteran wellbeing center?
In all the cases to date, the government has made that decision.
And has, in all of those cases, has there been any consultation with the department about the appropriateness of those regions as being a location for a veteran wellbeing center?
No, not consultation, no.
Are you aware, or to your knowledge, what are the criteria that the government uses in identifying a region for a veteran wellbeing center?
We're not aware of the criteria.
Okay. Now, am I correct? So as you've identified, the first three recipients for the grant were Adelaide, Townsville and Perth. Have the allocations of those grants been fully expended?
Yes.
And to date, are those centers fully operational?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if I can turn back to that document, the ministerial submission that we've just had displayed, you can see under sub-paragraph B, there's a reference to potential centers at Wodonga, Nowra and Darwin. Of those three processes you've just mentioned in terms of allocation of a grant, so limited grant, open grant or open tender process, can I ask you to identify for me which process was used for each of those locations?
Each of them was a little different, so I need to address each one and we'll do this as a tandem thing. If we start with Wodonga, there was an existing organization, the Hume Veterans Information Service Centre was already operating in Wodonga in premises that weren't ideal. And it emerged with community support without much difficulty that that center, which is supported by Victorian RSL, was the core of a service going forward in need of better premises from which to deliver their services.
So was that a limited grant process?
Yes, in the end it was, you would describe it as a limited grant process, yes.
And so you've spoken about, I think you've spoken about some level of consultation or identification of that as a location. What, was there a formal structure around that identification of that location and the RSL as an appropriate lead organization for that location?
There was a process of consultation with the local community, but they had already formed a pretty strong group behind the Hume Veterans Centre and the Victorian RSL as the supporting organization going forward. The Victorian RSL was prepared to stand behind the sustainability funding for the center going forward into the future. And the community coalesced behind that, that organization.
Can I just unpack that concept with you of community? We heard yesterday evidence from RSL Tasmania where they identified one of their challenges is the older age demographic of their membership. So when you say you engaged with community, can you just explain to the commissioners what that looked like in practice?
Well, for example, we had a half-day meeting with the veteran community in Wodonga. I was present at that meeting and it involved representatives from all kinds of organizations that had a connection to the veteran community, including from Aubrey and other places, I think in Wangaratta as well. The state government was their defense because of the nearby barracks. And so their family liaison officers and those types of people were involved, those that do outreach to the, to the defense and veteran community. The local government was present and they were strongly supportive of the initiative. And then a range of other organizations that provide services within the community, either veteran-specific and broader than veteran-specific.
So are you talking about there, for example, the Salvation Army, which might be an organization? I'm not saying specifically that one, but organizations of those types.
They could have been, yes.
Okay. Can I then ask you to outline the process for Nowra?
Perhaps I would cover that one. I attended the consultation, so very similar. We had a consultation session, sorry.
So can I just stop you there? Just at the outset, was it limited grant, open grant or open tender?
It was a limited grant.
Okay, then if you could explain to me then the way in which that limited grant process operated?
So there's a similar consultation process. The deputy secretary, not our deputy secretary, but another deputy secretary attended with myself and some other staff and the New South Wales Government and reps from a whole range of ex-service and other organizations and individuals. And we, the community. And we, the community, in a same sense, coalesced behind RSL New South Wales, developing a proposal. As we continued to explore that, RSL New South Wales passed the responsibility to RSL Life Care, which is a sort of solely owned entity of theirs. They conducted extensive consultation on a very wide region to prepare the business case that we then assessed.
Just to be there, you said the RSL itself conducted a consultation process. Again, I just raised that issue in terms of, you know, we've heard themes of evidence both about the average age of members of RSL organisations, but also separately about challenges RSL face in terms of engaging with a younger veteran demographic. Is that something that the department takes into account in terms of identifying who these lead organisations are?
Yeah, a critical part of the assessment process is considering the engagement of the business case as part of the limited tender, is to say what engagement that the organisation has had with the community and are they able to understand and address the needs of that community.
And so can you give me, I'm not asking you to sort of give me insight into the merits of a specific proposal, but in terms of that issue that I've raised about a lack of engagement between RSLs and younger veterans, how do you objectively assess that? Do you just take what's said in the business case or is there an objective process to test that?
I might be able to assist with that one. In many cases, the RSLs, well, the two that we're talking about here are also connected into other ESOs that more typically represent younger veterans. For example, Soldier On, they have an arm called Mates for Mates, which is also probably has a younger demographic. And so we would be looking to see that there's a wide range of organisations engaged and supporting the proposal going forward. And we know, you know, there's a range of organisations that focus more on younger veterans.
So in terms of that example you've just given me, Ms. Pope, are you talking there about, for example, a proposal that the RSL will engage with particular ESOs that attract a younger demographic of veterans as part of their business case?
I don't think we've set it out quite like that, but we would certainly be looking to see that they have a wide range of engagements and that there is that broad community support. And when I say broad community, I mean from the full sort of demographic spread. I mean, there are other organisations like the Walridos Guild that have a very specific representation, legacy, other agencies like those. And we would look to see, as I said, that wide representation and an expectation that the lead organisation would seek to collaborate and work closely with a full range of organisations.
So you've identified that as an expectation. Are there any stipulations in the grant to ensure that occurs? For example, that some of those organisations that have a reach to a younger veteran community have a seat on the board of the RSL? Are there any formal conditions that are imposed in the grant to ensure that objective is achieved?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not to date, no.
Okay. Now, can I just then turn finally to Darwin and the process that was used there? Just starting with the nature of the process in terms of those three options we've talked about?
Mr. Mean has a closer knowledge of that one.
So in this instance, it was a limited tender process, but there was a step before that process. So the deputy commissioner in the Northern Territory set up a liaison group of ESOs, representing a broad spectrum of organisations in the Northern Territory, or in Darwin specifically. And that group helped us to do some initial consultation directly with veterans and their families in the Darwin region. After we did that consultation, we had a feel for the sorts of things that the community was looking for in that region. And then we sought organisations who are interested in applying for a grant. And we actually had two organisations come forward in that instance, and yes.
Sorry, can I just stop you there? Can I, do you think there's any disadvantage? So we've spoken about limited grant and open grant processes. And in the case of the Northern Territory, you've identified there is a limited grant process, but through ineffective body that the Northern Territory Government sort of directed you to.
That's not quite right.
Have I misstated that? No, please correct me, Ms. Pope.
DVA encouraged or led the engagement process to find out from the community what they were looking for. It wasn't the Northern Territory Government, just to be clear, although they were involved and supportive of the process.
What, do you think there are any disadvantages to using that approach you've just described as opposed to an open grant process? Just in terms of the rigor of the grant selection process?
I think I'd answer it, sorry, if I may, the other way around. There are some advantages to the limited process and I can go back to the start of your question in sort of reverse. The issue is if you, what we're trying to do is build consensus and collaboration and avoid a competitive situation, especially in small communities, where what you really want is, you know, strong support for an organisation going forward.
Can I just stop you there? In terms of that process of consensus and collaboration, do you think there's a possibility that that objective may be put asunder if there is a perception within the ESOs in a particular region that one organisation has been identified as part of a limited grant process as opposed to an open grant process, where there is sort of a greater transparency?
I would say the process happens a little differently and it's a bit by osmosis. So it wasn't that we were directing this to happen. So there were two organisations that looked like they were going to compete for the grant. And before the process commenced, they joined together and became the one process going forward. So one recognised that the other might be the better lead and the process joined together. The disadvantage of an open process is that you can get a lot of competing applicants who may not be even eligible. And a lot of time and effort and disappointment can go into that sort of preparation. So the groundwork we do, and I understand the point that you're also making, but the groundwork we do is to try and understand the dynamics of the community in the location in the first instance. And if it's clear that there's an organisation that has support from the broad community, that's an easier, smoother process for everyone involved and good for the community. And if that's evident, that's the way we approach it. If that's not the case, then we would go with a different approach.
And can I ask, has an open grant process been used in respect of the implementation of this particular programme?
In the case of South East Queensland, we went to an EOI process and that was an open application for whichever organisations wished to put forward an application. That was partly also because that was a region, so all of South East Queensland, not a, you know, a particular location. And I would say that, I'm sorry, I'll stop.
No, 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 that's fine. I'm going to ask you a bit more about South East Queensland in a moment. I just thought touching on that issue you just raised about disappointment in relation to ESOs who are not successful and the objective of collaboration. How do you as a department manage that or do you manage that in terms of ensuring collaboration with disappointed ESO applicants?
Well, certainly the process of feedback after a process is the opportunity for DVA to help with that and explaining why one organisation might have been selected over another and encouraging both the successful organisation and the unsuccessful one to continue to work together.
And so what form does that consultation take? Is it sort of face-to-face meetings or correspondence? Or how do you manage that on the ground?
In the COVID environment, it's video conference or telephone, generally speaking. But there's a written element to it, of course, as well for the formal part of the process. But the discussion about feedback is, we've only actually had to do it in one instance so far and Mr. Mean undertook that process himself, so.
And was that in the South East Queensland?
That's correct, yes.
Well, I will come to South East Queensland now then. When was funding announced for centres in South East Queensland?
So there were, the funding for both Tasmania and South East Queensland was announced, I'm going to get the date wrong probably, but the May 2021 budget?
So the May 2021 budget, as I understand it, in the Tasmanian case at least, there was a particular press release on the 23rd of December 2021. But in the case of Tasmania, had there been an earlier public announcement of funding to that location?
There were two amounts of funding pertaining to Tasmania. 2.5 million was announced on the 23rd of December 2021. And I think I've gotten the date wrong, actually. I think it was 2020 that the budget funding was, I'm not sure which.
Sorry, 2021.
It is 2021, sorry, where the $5 million was announced for Tasmania and for South East Queensland.
And there was also an announcement made for funding for the ACT. Do you recall when that was?
There hasn't been any funding allocated to the ACT.
Oh, there hasn't been? I'm incorrect about that, okay. And just in terms of, I'll come to Tasmania in a moment, but just in terms of South East Queensland, am I correct to understand from your earlier evidence that the selection of South East Queensland as a location or a region for a veteran wellbeing centre was a decision made by the government, not in consultation with the department?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, am I correct that in addition to a proposal for a veteran wellbeing centre in South East Queensland, there's some consideration being given to such a centre in the Sunshine Coast?
Not sure exactly what you're referring to there, but, well, Sunshine Coast is part of South East Queensland.
No, I appreciate that. And I may be wrong about this, but I'd understood that there was a proposal. And I can ask for the document to be displayed. You just bear with me while that comes up. So you can see there that there's reference to potential locations, one being, excuse me, South East Queensland, the other being Sunshine, the Sunshine Coast region. Would I be right to understand, do you know, is this a department document?
Yes, it is.
Could you explain to me what the nature of this document is?
Yes. These are in relation to commitments made prior to and in, around the time of the most recent election in 2022. So both the then government and the then opposition made commitments in relation to future centres. The government, the government of the day made an election commitment and also a budget commitment. And the opposition at the time also made an election commitment. And this document was part of sorting through the proposals that were made in the light of the outcome of the 2022 election and confirmation of locations going forward.
So would it be fair to say, Ms. Pope, that in terms of the implementation of this programme, it's very much been a government-directed process? That is, the perspective or the government of the day identifies where those centres will be located?
That's largely been the experience to date, yes.
And at least in the case of Perth, Adelaide and Townsville, it is the government of the day who identifies who will be the recipient or who will be the lead organisation for that grant?
Yes, that's right.
And the role of the department has been to try and fit those executive decisions within a model such as one you've described here of what might be the actual needs that will be met by a centre in those locations?
That was a longish question.
Sorry, it is a long question.
I have a straightforward answer to that.
Let me put it this way, so you've identified in relation to this document, this document was a document by which you as a department, as I understand it, tried to fit commitments announced by both the then opposition and government about where there would be a veteran wellbeing centre within an analysis of what actually were the needs of the veterans in those particular communities?
Not quite. I think what I would characterise this document is, is looking at the various locations that had been mentioned or announced in either election commitments or other contexts and working out which ones might have the best foundation for going forward if decisions were to be made to choose between them, because there were in the end, then a lot of potential locations in play.
And when you say the best foundations, what are the department's criteria for those foundations?
I wouldn't put it as strongly as criteria, but the sort of things we were looking at were the presence of defence bases or other defence facilities, the concentration of DVA clients in those areas. And we did subsequently have access to the first releases of data from the census to look at the presence and concentration of veterans in those locations. And then also where there were the presence of strong and well-established ex-service organisations that might be a potential lead organisation. I'd say, I wouldn't call them criteria, but they were the sorts of things we were looking at.
So you're looking, for example, in relation to a particular location, about whether or not there is a concentrated veteran population there and if there are any service gaps?
We didn't go as far as looking at service gaps, but looking at whether there was a concentration of veteran population, yes.
Okay. If I can turn then to the implementation of the veteran wellbeing programme in Tasmania. So as I understand it, you've identified that there have been numerous funding announcements, but if I can just focus on the $5 million funding announcement, that was made in about May of 2020?
I'm forgetting the date.
It's 2021.
2021.
It was made in 2021. Are you aware that in about 2020, the federal and state government jointly commissioned the University of Tasmania to undertake a feasibility study in relation to Tasmanian veteran wellbeing?
Yes.
So did that predate or postdate the announcement of funding for Tasmania?
It predated it. So the ministers were in discussions about Tasmania at the end of 2019. And into 2020, announced the feasibility study in June 2020. And the department conducted a process to identify a suitable organisation to produce that feasibility study in concert with the Tasmanian government. So it was a jointly funded proposal. And the University of Tasmania was contracted to do that work in September 2020.
And you said there was discussion between the ministers. We've obviously heard evidence from Minister Barnett earlier this week. Are you talking there about discussions between the then federal minister and Minister Barnett?
Yes, between Minister Chester and Minister Barnett, yes.
Can I ask, why, obviously we've heard about other regions where there was just a decision made to identify a particular region as a location for a veteran wellbeing hub. Why was it different for Tasmania?
I don't know. The decision was made between the ministers that the feasibility study would be initiated.
Okay. And am I correct, that feasibility study was completed in about February 2021?
April 2021.
April 2021. But the results of that study were not released until 23 December 2021?
That's correct.
Now, Minister Barnett gave evidence earlier this week that it was a federal government decision to delay the release of the report. Are you able to comment on that?
Yes, that's true. It needed joint agreement to release the document. And we had a change of minister in July 2021. I keep getting my years mixed up, 2021. And the new minister needed to be afforded the opportunity to consider the direction of the programme and make his own decisions about that. And the decision was made in December and announced on the 23rd.
Sorry, so you said that was July 2021, there was the new minister upon him? So between July and December, there was a delay while the new minister considered the report?
That's correct.
Okay. And in terms of, was there any engagement between the minister and the department in relation to the timing of the release of the report? Or were you directed by the then federal minister when it was to be released?
I know there was engagement between the department and the minister through that period between July and December.
And are you able to comment upon the nature of that engagement relevant to the objects of the report?
We were providing advice on the timeframe for the delivery of the $5 million to an organisation, working back through the steps that would have to be completed and the timeframe over which that would need to happen.
And what were the constraints on the timeframe for Tasmania?
The main issue was the release of the feasibility study because it was a document needed for the purposes of consultation with prospective organisations in Tasmania.
So you appreciate that that sounds a little circular in that the delay of the report delayed the allocation of the funding? um, delayed the allocation of the funding. But as I understand, you've just said, the allocation of the funding was the reason for the delay of the report, or have I misunderstood that?
Uh, I think you might have misunderstood, but I'm not sure I followed that last bit um, correctly. But basically, uh, the report was required uh, for the consultation to be conducted. Uh, and we needed it to be publicly released so that we could use it for that uh, purpose.
So why the six month delay in relation to the re- the release of the report?
I'm afraid that's a matter for the minister.
Okay, okay. Now, um, the report was released on the twenty third of December. And at the same time, an announcement was made to provide, uh, as I understand, an additional two point five million dollar funding for Tasmania?
That's correct.
Um, now, there were two elements to that. Two point two five million dollars was for a veteran wellbeing centre in Burnie, and that was to be given to the North West Tasmanian Welfare Board?
That's correct.
Um, who decided to make that grant?
The government.
The government did, okay. Um, were you consulted in relation to that decision? Was the department consulted in relation to that decision?
No.
Um, to your knowledge, what criteria was used to identify the need for funding for a centre in Burnie?
I, I don't have knowledge of criteria.
Um, to your knowledge, what criteria was used to identify the North West Tasmanian Welfare Board as the appropriate recipient of that funding?
I'm, I'm not aware of criteria.
Okay. Have those grant monies been paid to the North West Tasmanian Welfare Board?
Uh, no.
Can I ask why that is?
Uh, yes, certainly. Um, the, there's a, a limited uh, grant process in play, um, as, as we've described elsewhere. So while the organisation was identified, uh, we need to go through a process of um, requesting and receiving a business case for, for the receipt of the, of the funding, and we're in that process at the moment.
And what will happen, for example, if um, the department makes a decision that the business case isn't appropriate, having regard to the objectives of the veteran wellbeing programme?
Well, it's our intention to work with the organisation to assist them to develop a suitable, suitable business case. Uh, uh, we haven't faced a circumstance where that has not been possible to date, so uh, I, I can't really comment on what would happen in the.
But the ultimate goal is to ensure that the business case will meet the criteria that will enable that funding to be made.
That's correct.
Um, and how long has that process been engaged in? So when did the limited grant process commence in relation to the North West Tasmanian Welfare Board?
Uh, it's been impacted by the federal election uh, to, to an extent. So uh, uh, we conducted consultations in uh, Tasmania in relation to the five million dollars on the sixteenth, seventeenth and twenty third of um, March this year. Uh, and uh, we were working through the process with the North West uh, Tasmanian Welfare, Veterans Welfare Board, uh, when the uh, and, and making, making progress with them, but the calling of the election, the uh, uh, caretaker period meant that we had to uh, suspend that work until after the election, and we have recommenced that work in.
And is there a timeframe for the completion of that process in relation to the North West Tasmanian Welfare Board?
There's no constraint uh, uh, on that particularly.
Um, can I then, then turn to the remaining um, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that was announced on the twenty third of December? As I understand it, that was um, the recipient of that grant was to be Launceston RSL?
That's correct.
Who decided that the recipient was to be that organisation?
The government.
Okay. Um, was the department consulted in relation to the appropriateness of RSL Launceston as the recipient of the grant?
No.
Or the appropriateness of a grant being made under the programme in relation to an organisation in Launceston?
No.
No?
No, sorry, I said no.
Okay. Um, am I correct that the money has been paid to RSL Launceston?
Yes, and Mr Meehan can speak to that.
Yes, the last ten thousand hasn't uh, yet been paid. There's still um, an outstanding milestone, but it's the two hundred, the, the bulk of the money's been paid, yes.
And did RSL Launceston have to go through the subsequent limited grant process that the North West Tasmanian Board did?
So we use, for, for all uh, grants, um, uh, back as early as Perth and, and on, we have run a process of looking at the grant and assessing value for money and ensuring that the, the, regardless of the, the providence of the organisation, that the, the grant represents value for money and, and uh, for the Commonwealth. So we go through a process of assessing each um, business case against the GOGs. In this, I'm sorry, that's the Grand Opportunity Guidelines.
Yeah, no, I was, I was gonna ask, so, so was RSL Launceston required to provide a business case of the type?
They were, yes. Um, in the most recent version of the Grand Opportunity Guidelines, we had taken the chance, opportunity to reduce the requirements for that business case. Um, and so we were able to uh, allow um, RSL Launceston to produce a much smaller business case and do a, a much faster assessment process.
And so is there a discretion or to require a less onerous business case? Or, or do the current grant ki- guidelines um, produce a less onerous business case requirement than in the two thousand and nineteen Grant Guidelines?
Yeah, the current guidelines have specifically allow for um, grads under three million to have a, a simpler process. Um, in, which is, which is uh, in line with the Commonwealth Grant, um, uh, the Commonwealth Grant Rules uh, Guidelines.
So it's commensurate with the amount of funds that will be?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, now, the grant to obviously North West Tasmanian Board is under three million dollars. So in that case, does it have the less onerous business case requirements?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, can I then turn to the remaining pool of five million dollars for Tasmania? I- in terms of those three types of processes, is it limited grant, open grant or open tender?
It's limited grant.
Okay. Um, and I think you mentioned, Ms Pope, that the limited grant process started in March twenty twenty two?
The consultations uh, happened on the sixteenth, seventeenth and twenty third of March with the veteran community in Tasmania.
And so obviously there's sort of a three month delay allowing for Christmas and the like between the announcement and that consultation process. Is there a particular reason for that?
Uh, well, you've referred to it yourself, really, the Christmas period's not a good time to do consultation because people are away. So uh, generally, we wouldn't do that in uh, December and January. So from February onwards, we were arranging for those consultations.
And when you say it's a limited grant process, um, has more than one ESO been identified as part of that process to make an application?
Look, me too. So as part of the process, um, we invited six organisations uh, to put in an expression of interest. So that's a, a smaller um, document than a business case. It just outlines kind of the basics of what they want to do. And from that expression of interest, we would choose an organisation to go to the next step of the limited grant process, which we would say to the one particular organisation, um, we might give them a small grant of uh, fifty thousand dollars to help develop a business case. They would develop a business case as part of a limited tender process and uh, could be approved by the minister as a delegate.
And am I right in terms of that expression of interest process? Is that a process in which the department gets together a board to assess?
That's correct, a panel house.
And who are the members of that panel?
Uh, so the panel's made up of members of uh, DVA with, with a broad range of experience. So um, uh, I've chaired a number of those um, panels. Um, the, we usually have represented from Open Arms on that panel as well. And the deputy commissioner are from DVA for the region. And then we have uh, independent panel members as well, um, usually the state government and Department of Defence.
Uh, now, we heard evidence from one of the applicants for that process, RSL Tasmania. And they identified that there was a consult- consultation in March and then the date for the making of the expression of interest was about a month later in April. Uh, one of the observations made by RSL Tasmania is that there is no engagement from the department subsequent to making that expression of interest. Um, would you care to comment on the benefits or downsides of that engagement as part of your assessment process?
So um, the, the, the issue that we had in this process is that caretaker, uh, the election was called and caretaker um, limited our opportunity to progress that grant. However, in all of the panel arrangements, um, we, the panel members, if there's information that's not provided in the process, are free to organise to reach out as a group uh, to that organisation and get some feedback and some clarification, including uh, having that organisation present to them. So it's not necessarily that process hasn't occurred, it may or may not be needed and hasn't occurred yet.
And in your experience, I mean, this, this process, we've talked about the EOI process with the assessment panel. How many regions has that particular process occurred with since the programme was announced in two thousand and nineteen?
So there were three EOI's commenced, um, but in the Northern Territory, as we discussed earlier, the two organisations, um, one of the organisations stepped aside and said the other organisation would take the lead. So we started an EOI, but we didn't complete it. Uh, in the other two locations, uh, South East Queensland and Tasmania.
And so in terms of South East Queensland, for example, um, as part of that process, was there any reach out from the assessment board to particular organisations that put in a um, expression of interest?
Yeah, some of the leading organisations were asked to present to the panel, uh, to provide further information.
So it's something that has happened in practice?
Oh, and, sorry.
He said, no, no, go on.
I was gonna say, in, in the assessment of the business case, um, we've often, the panel's often reached out for clarification as well. So that's kind of a, a process that's similar in that there's a panel constituted very similar to the one I've described. And the, that panel has the opportunity to ask questions uh, about the business case.
And so am I correct in terms of how that process works? So say, for example, there are, um, and I'm not gonna ask you about the specifics of this particular process, but you, you've identified here there are six applications for an expression of interest. You've identified that the first sort of decision that's made in relation to that process is what organisations will produce a business case?
So it, as part of the expression of interest, we've invited six organisations to put in an expression of interest. That doesn't mean that they all have. Um, and uh, going through the process of assessing the um, EOI is to try and identify a single organisation to go forward to produce the large business case that's required. Um, uh, which obviously is an onerous task, so that's one of the purposes of limited tender, to limit the amount of work because we've got the EOI where we can kind of make an initial assessment and, which is a, a smaller document, and then a larger document just to one organisation to see if they can get across the line on.
So would it be correct to understand that, that the initial expression of interest process is about identifying sort of at a general level who might be an appropriate organisation? Um, once you've made that decision, you then take a more granular assessment through a business case about the appropriateness of the grant by reference to the guidelines?
That's correct.
And am I correct that the organisation that is identified by virtue of the EOI process is given a grant of fifty thousand dollars to assist in the preparation of the business case?
Uh, generally, yes.
Yes. Um, and again, I don't want the details of the assessments of the merits of this process, but when do you expect that a decision will be made about the end of the EOI aspect of the process for Tasmania?
Quite, quite soon.
Okay.
The, the panel has been uh, put together and uh, it's, it's about to commence its deliberations.
And once that decision is made, sort of on average, how long does it take from that decision being made to the completion of the business case process and decision on the business case?
That varies because the organisation has to go away and do the, the work to produce a, a, a full business case.
But in terms of your experience with the implementation of the programme to date, can you give me a broad idea of, of the time periods that it takes?
It's varied quite a lot. I'd say, you know, four to six weeks perhaps for the development of business case. Um, we might agree on four weeks and they might ask for a sho- short extension, for example. Um, other organisations are very ready and, and, and deliver the business case early.
And once that business case is provided, how long is it then, again, on average, from the provision of the business case to a final decision being made about the allocation of the grant monies?
So as soon as the business case is finalized, uh, our, we, we assess it as quickly as we can, get the um, recommendation to the minister, and as soon as the ministers, uh, well, if the minister approves it as delegate, then um, the, um, the announcement is made straight away and we start working on assigning an agreement.
So it's a quite quick process from there?
It can be quite quick, yes. Depends on a range of factors, but can be quite quick, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just a second. Can I just ask you, sort of in closing, we've identified that this, you've identified that this is a capital works programme, um, but there is at least a thought process being engaged in by the department about the need for funding for service delivery as part of veteran wellbeing. Can I ask each of you what your view is about the key barriers to success of the veteran wellbeing programme in terms of its objective of service delivery to veterans and their families?
Do you want me to go first?
Yep.
Um, it, that's a broad question, but um, but certainly because we see the potential for this programme going forward and the opportunities that it represents for veterans and their families, we, we are um, thinking about at the ways that we can support it going forward. So uh, sustainability funding into the future is one of the things that we uh, uh, we are concerned about. Um, notwithstanding that the organisations make those commitments, um, it, it's prudent for us to be thinking about that as well. So uh, and the uh, submission around the grants programme that you uh, showed earlier is a, is part of our consideration about that. Um, that also fits with the, the uh, advocacy we get from the community around funding for all sorts of programmes um, going forward and alongside other grants programmes that I mentioned before that we, we run. So sustainability is, is one of the, the challenges. I guess coverage is another. Um, at the moment, there are three fully operating centres and three operating from temporary premises. Australia's a very big uh, country, so um, you know, what makes a fully uh, connected uh, network? Um, and uh, because it's a, a, a capital works programme as, as described, and I think you've correctly rec- recognised that we've gone a bit further than uh, straightforward uh, capital grants program in the sense that we've tried to help the centres form a network. And so the formation of a network is something that we think is important and that the centres work together, uh, that they share best practice and, and so on. So that collaboration and, and cooperation is really important to us too.
And can I just touch on that, that matter you talked about in terms of sustainability of funding? Um, would you agree that the need for these hubs to be self-funding is, or the current need for these hubs to be self-funding is a risk factor in terms of their longevity?
Uh, no, I wouldn't, because the cases that they've put forward have been um, well documented and well argued. Uh, they're strong, established uh, ex-service organisations uh, so far that are responsible for the uh, uh, management of those centres going forward. And they certainly, um, in the case of, for example, Victoria and RSL, have been around for a long time and uh, have extensive uh, both uh, real estate and other uh, infrastructure available to them to support uh, the delivery of, of uh, the programmes and a lot of experience um, in, in doing it. So uh, I, 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 it's something we're paying attention to. I don't think it's, it's, it's certainly not a current risk, but it's something that we'll be um, keeping an eye on over the years of the programme as it, as, as the centres develop.
And in terms of keeping an eye on that issue of developing a self-funding base, i- is that a matter in respect to which the lead organisations for whom grants have been made have reporting obligations?
No.
Okay. And we've talked about some of the other reporting obligations in terms of utilisation of services. Are there any other key reporting obligations directed to the objectives of the centre? And I'm talking there about the delivery of services to veterans and their community?
Uh, no, in the sense that this, as we've been discussing, is a capital works uh, programme. But we are working with the centres around reporting, but it's voluntary. And they are uh, very keen to collaborate with one another and with, with DVA for the good of the programme going forward. Uh, but the, if you're asking whether we can compel them to uh, report or to provide data or so on, and so on, uh, no, that's not the nature of the programme.
So it's reliant on the willingness of the lead organisation to engage with the department in relation to those matters?
Yes.
Yes. A- and equally, obviously, the department has an objective to facilitate that, but it also requires the exercise of a discretion on the part of the department to determine to seek to engage with those lead organisations?
Yes, I suppose technically we could wash our hands of the circumstance, but that's, that's not how we're approaching it.
Thank you, Ms Pope. Mr Meehan, I have no. Thank you, Ms Pope. Mr Mean, I have no further questions. Thank you. Commissioners?
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Can I just ask, what's the, what's the current status of, not the right word, but there have been a number of, there are three centers that are operational at the moment. There are a number of other centers where this process is in place. There's three further centers that are operating from temporary premises while they finalize their permanent premises, but they are up and operating. That's Darwin, Nowra and Wodonga. And then we have in, in Train, South East Queensland and Tas, well, Tasmania and South East Queensland, and then the additional grants to Launceston and Burnie. Right. And as I understand it, there were additional election commitments, which was that list that you had.
That list is a complicated list of both previous government and current government, but the current government made a commitment to 10 centers, which included Tasmania and South East Queensland and identified eight other locations that they intend to establish centers in.
So that takes us to 18, is that right?
Six and two, sixteen.
Including Burnie and Launceston, it would be 18, but 16 otherwise, yeah.
Sixteen.
Sixteen in the formal part of the, the program. Burnie and Launceston being slightly different, but being incorporated into the program, yes.
So has, and I appreciate that a lot of this has been government kind of led rather than departmental, but has the department provided any view about what might be a desirable number of veteran wellbeing centers? No. Do, do you think that would be something that might be worth doing, actually looking? Because you, you spoke about looking at with that list about the census data and various criteria that might help inform whether or not a location was suitable. You know, would it be worthwhile, the department actually, considering what might be an optimal number or a reasonable number?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the way I answered your question was whether we had provided that advice or, or not. But yes, I don't, I, I think because of the way it's evolved, there hasn't been the opportunity to conceive of it, I guess, as a, in terms of coverage. And it's been incrementally added to, but it's certainly of interest to us now that we're getting to the number of potential locations being as many as 16 or 18, that we could certainly undertake analysis with the benefit of the census data in particular, which has only been available to us for a couple of months, not even that, six weeks, to look at, are there any particular gaps? Are there populations of veterans where there isn't a center and so on? But I think it's pretty hard to pick a number and say this would be the, the right number. For example, in relation to Tasmania, the recommendations out of the feasibility study were a sort of dispersed model with, with multiple sort of service points rather than one center in one location. And that was based on the propensity of people in Tasmania to travel to access services. And that's something that would need to be considered, I would say, in other locations as well. Because Townsville's a long way from Brisbane, for example. So there's, there's that. So I don't, we, we don't yet know how the program will evolve or the number of locations that there may ultimately be. I would also say that there are a lot of other centers that are not funded by DVA that are operating as, as veteran hubs in essence across the country.
How, how many of those would there be?
Quite a few.
A varying size.
Various sizes, supported by various organizations. For example, Victorian RSL has established what they call hubs in Frankston and Warrnambool in Victoria. There's a center in Adelaide called the Jamie Larkham Center that operates in a sort of hub sense. Quite a few of the RSLs already do, RSL Queensland in Brisbane, for example. So there's, there's a lot of them around the country.
Okay. So in terms of the centers that are being established through government, do you, and I, I know you touched on this a little bit, but I'm just a bit unclear in terms of evaluation, what actually is being considered in terms of evaluating individual centers? And then perhaps also about models? Because they're not necessarily the same model.
No, they're not the same and deliberately not the same, as, as I know you're already aware. Because we want the centers to, to respond to local circumstances and to test and trial what might work in their local region. We facilitate a collaborative forum between the centers. And that helps them to share best practice, to learn about DVA and defense services. So we have people come along and present to that, it's a virtual forum, to help them identify additional services, to see what other centers are doing, to, to learn what's worked and, and what hasn't. We have commissioned a, an evaluation framework and the desire for that came up in consultation with the, the lead organizations and their interest in, as Mr Mean described earlier, having some consistency and comparability between what they're delivering and how they're delivering it, the data that they might collect and their willingness to share some of that data with, with, with DVA. But that's still being worked through at the moment. But in the sense of DVA developing an evaluation program to impose on the centers, that's not what this, that's not what this is.
My final question, I think, just in terms of the objective of the centers is to facilitate that kind of connection between veterans, their families and their communities. I'm just wondering about, and I think you said, Ms Pope, that this is kind of one way of achieving that. What are the other ways in which that's being facilitated?
Yeah, I actually think I misunderstood the question earlier when council asked the question because I thought it was about DVA connecting with veterans and their families, whereas the question I think you're asking is about ESOs and the community connecting with veterans and their families. And to that extent, this is the, the main one that DVA is assisting in funding. But as I said, there are lots of organizations operating in a similar fashion around the country where, where that happens. DVA itself engages with, with ex-service organizations in a range of ways that have been described either here or at other, other hearings. We've also talked about the complexity of the ESO community, you know, across the country and the plethora of organizations involved. But the centers offer probably the best opportunity for fostering that into the future.
Okay, I'll leave my questions there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you again for coming back. But yesterday we heard from the Tasmania and RSL about their hopes for a veterans' center here and one which they hope to establish in cooperation with other ESOs in Tasmania. I gather from what you've just said to Commissioner Brown that you're not pushing any particular model of hub in any particular place. But do you have any policy in favor of trying to foster cooperation between ESOs?
We, we're certainly supportive of consortium approaches to, to the delivery of a center as we've described. And the business cases require the organizations to set out how they will engage with the community widely. And so we're certainly very interested in how they set out and propose to do that. And through our involvement in consultations and discussions, it becomes pretty clear how well or otherwise an organization is engaging with its fellow organizations and are working together in the sense of collaboration and cooperation. So we're certainly looking for that.
Because yesterday the panel gave examples in effect of the RSL's strengths compared to mates for mates strengths and soldier on's strengths, which could be catered for appropriately in the one center, which seemed to be persuasive anyway.
I prefer not to comment on that, given that the process is ongoing.
But from my point of view, it just seems to be a, something overall that would be desirable to get more cooperation amongst ESOs.
I think we've been really pleased with how, for example, in the Darwin case we were discussing, where there were two separate bids going forward and they joined together. That certainly to us, it's very preferable if the, the community in that, whatever the location is, can coalesce behind a, either an individual organization or a collection of organizations that goes forward. Because collaboration and working together is the fundamental purpose of this. And if veterans and their families are to be able to access a whole range of services, then those organizations have to work together to deliver them. So, and we want it to be a harmonious, welcoming, safe place for veterans and their families to come. So again, that principle of collaboration is really important.
Thank you. Mr Ma, did you wish to add anything to that?
No, I'm good. Thank you. That's good coverage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Ma, can you just expand on the role of the Strategic Planning Unit? Your court, your charter and your, your terms of reference, if you like?
Yeah, so the Strategic Planning Unit was set up, I think in February of 2019. And the role is, so that falling under my remit is a team that runs strategic policy for the department. I believe that's the first team that's run strategic policy in the department. But the role is to look to the future of the department and see how the department should position itself to be ready for challenges that it's facing in the future. Also during that period, I managed grants for some part of that period, the team managed grants for some part of that period, research for some part of that period, which has an obviously connection with strategic policy and the veteran wellbeing centers for the bulk of that period.
Is forecasting or anticipating demand or, or services part of the charter at all?
No, we, Data and Insights Branch does that work. We work with Data and Insight Branch to understand what they've got and, and, and think about it. But no, they do the forecasting work primarily.
Thank you. Ms Pope, just in relation to the ESOT, the, the group that comes together, we have heard evidence about it previously on a number of occasions. And please forgive me if my memory is not the best. I understand there is some work going on at the moment in terms of a defining criteria for membership and possibly for tenure of how long membership is for. I understand at the moment the reason they're limited tenure, people are on there effectively for life. Can you just let us know where that's at? If there is a work going on in that space?
I'm sorry, I'm actually not aware of work going on in that space, but there could be. But I'm not directly responsible for it, so I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't really know.
No problem. Are you able to take that on notice and perhaps the department can get back to us on that issue? My memory, and I'm happy to be corrected, but my memory from previous evidence from other senior officers is that they were looking at that issue. Because at the moment, as I understand it, both in terms of eligibility for membership and for tenure of membership, it's not clear.
I, I can certainly confirm that, that what you just said is, is accurate, to my understanding. And yes, we'd be happy to take the, the question of the future on notice, if that's helpful.
Grateful if we can find out if there is work going on in terms of defining these issues more clearly or, or not.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brown has more questions.
Sorry, I'm just sitting here thinking through, you know, how the centers are going to operate. One of the issues that was raised by RSL Tasmania when we heard from them yesterday was, was in relation to their process for case management. And they were proposing an IT solution for, you know, facilitating engagement with all the veterans and their families in Tasmania. Now, I'm not entirely sure of what kind of cost that, that would be, but I know from past experience, every time you talk IT, you talk dollars. So I'm just wondering, and, and also we had some discussion about the need potentially for capacity building, you know, like the, the aim is to engage with existing services and kind of facilitate that access. But there's also going to be some gaps identified and the need to actually develop or facilitate development in the community of new services to meet the gap. So I'm just wondering, in terms of both potential IT costs and community capacity building, whether that is factored into the grant, the existing grant, whether there would be alternative grants that they could apply for if they found that to be a need? I mean, it's, it's kind of the, the bits that need to be in place in addition to capital, you know, buildings, et cetera, to actually get the best outcome in the longer term? I'm just wondering whether that's all captured by the current grant?
There's a number of answers to that. But so of course the centers can apply for grants from any source that might support those things, so capacity building and so on. DVA doesn't offer grants that do those things currently. The establishment of ICT systems, Mr Mean, will confirm is a legitimate expense as part of, of the capital grant that's being offered. He's nodding, that's excellent. But, no, I'm sorry, I've lost the rest of your question. So basically, they're, they can apply for grants. We don't have any other funding to, to make available to the centers on either a competitive or non-competitive basis. The $5 million is the total funding available to the centers at the moment. So what goes to infrastructure, which would include an IT system, can be funded from that $5 million. The capacity building that you talk about and the development of new services would need to be generated from within the service delivery community and get gauged with the, with the center.
Could I add to that, Commissioner? One of the benefits of this jurisdictional leads meeting where the, the, each of the centers has a, have a regular monthly conversation is issues like IT systems come up. And so that group can talk about solutions that perhaps they have in common. And so that kind of best practice and that opportunity to learn from others. And certainly when we've got an organization getting to the business case development stage, we often ask, ask the other centers, can they be contacted by the organization? And they invariably say yes. We provide those details and the center reaches out to get a greater understanding of the opportunities and approaches that they can take to, you know, in a practical sense. So I think that, that kind of community of veteran wellbeing centers is a very useful tool for emerging centers and, and to learn from each other, so.
Thank you. Mr Free, welcome back. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. No questions.
Thank you. Ms Callan, any questions?
No, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Ms Longbottom, any matters arising?
No, thank you, Commissioner. May the witnesses be excused?
Yes, your excuse from his summons to appear and thank you again for your evidence. And Ms Pope, we're appreciating how many times we've called you back and I can't promise it'll be the last time.
I'm, I'm getting a little used to being a frequent flyer, but it's a pleasure to, to appear. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other issues, we'll adjourn for lunch. I understand we're reconvening at 1pm.
The, the next session is scheduled for 1:15, Commissioner?
Okay, we've, we've got a fair bit of time. Hopefully we, we'll try and reconvene at 1pm.
Of course.
Thank you.
All rise. The Royal Commission is adjourned until 1pm.
The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide has resumed. Please be seated.
Good afternoon, Mr Singleton.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This afternoon's first witness is Mr Gavin Tunstall, who's in the witness box. Before introducing the session, could I yield to Mr Pearce, who will announce an appearance?
Thank you, Mr Pearce.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Pearce, spelt P-E-I-R-C-E, initials R-A. I'm a barrister at Law of the Queensland Bar. I'm instructed for Mr Tunstall by Operational Legal Australia.
Thank you. Made it.
If there are no other procedural or other matters, I'll proceed to introduce the session. Mr Tunstall was a soldier who served in the Army from 2005 through to 2020. I'm not sure whether, maybe, is that better? Yes, so Mr Tunstall served in the Army from 2005 to 2020. He'll give his own evidence as to the details of that, but I should give a warning to those who are watching that for some people, some of the evidence will be distressing. There will be some references without any details to domestic violence, and there will be references to warfare, which is inherently distressing, but in particular, the impact on children deployed by the Taliban in warfare. There's no suggestion of any war crimes or anything like that by Australian or Allied soldiers, but it's a distressing subject and there will be a few details.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. If I just take the opportunity to remind everyone who is either physically here or watching this online, please do contact our support services through our website if you are struggling with some of the evidence. We understand how difficult it is.
Could I ask that Mr Tunstall be sworn or affirmed?
Gavin Tunstall, do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So could you tell the Royal Commission your full name?
Gavin John Tunstall.
And you're an Army veteran?
Yes, I served as a combat engineer with the Royal Australian Engineers in the Army for 15 years.
I'll ask that Mr Tunstall's, or the tender list in respect of Mr Tunstall's evidence be brought up. I tender the five document, sorry, the seven documents.
Sorry, Mr See, but we can hear you if you're facing away from the line.
It's not working very well. I tender the documents on screen. The statement's in two forms. The redacted version is tendered as a public exhibit. The unredacted version has a confidential exhibit. The annexes have been redacted appropriately as well, tendered the material on the list.
Okay, thank you. They're accepted and they'll be allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers.
I can, for abundant clarity, I indicate that Mr Tunstall's evidence is what we're classifying as lived experience evidence.
Thank you.
Could I ask that Mr Tunstall's statement be brought up in the redacted form? GTU, quadruple zero, triple zero one, triple zero one, underscore R. Mr Tunstall, if you just have a look at the screen, do you see the first page of your statement with your address blacked out? Just on the computer screen.
Oh, yes, same.
And did you prepare this statement with the professional assistance of a team of lawyers?
That's correct.
For you? And are the contents of this statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and ability?
Yes.
We won't go through every detail because of time, and I'll just take you to some of the key points. Did you begin the process of enlisting in 2004?
Ah, yes.
How did you find the recruitment process?
I found it quite easy. I was motivated and didn't have any trouble getting in.
What led you to decide to join the Army?
I had a lot of dissatisfaction with my civilian life. I felt like there was no purpose to it and I wanted to do something to have a purpose to my life.
Did you meet somebody who made a recommendation?
Yeah, I met a truck driver in the yard who had served in the New Zealand Armed Forces and suggested that I try that.
And he was sworn in as a soldier on the 15th of April 2005 and then began recruit training at Kapuka near Wagga Wagga, is that right?
Correct.
How did you find the recruit training?
It was very rewarding. It taught me a lot about myself. It gave me a group of men to be around. I started to feel like I had a family.
You've said in your statement that you didn't personally experience any bullying. Did you see any?
No, there wasn't any.
Your statement says that you completed the recruit training in June 2005 and there was a graduation parade. Did your family come?
Ah, yeah, they did. My mother and my wife at the time.
Was the next training known as initial, sorry, initial employment training?
Yeah, that's correct.
For you, it was undertaken at Holesworthy?
Yeah, yeah.
How did you find the initial employment training?
Yeah, it was good. There was a lot of it I wasn't interested in, but yeah, we got through it all.
And what sort of tasks or skills were you trained in undertaking?
Expedient bridging, long-term bridging, deployment of palatable water, mine warfare, simple things like knots and lashings, mechanical machines, getting timber from the timber milling, and explosive dog detection unit.
All right. I just want to turn to the formal structure of your Army career. Where was your first formal posting? To which unit was that?
I was posted to the Incident Response Regiment in November 2005. Our whole OAT course was posted there, though getting ready for Commonwealth Games and needed to boost their numbers.
And what was your second posting?
Yeah, 2009, I posted to 17th Construction Squadron upon leaving Incident Response Regiment. And yeah, I had a position there as a combat engineer.
Were you there until 2012?
Yeah, that's correct.
And in January 2012, was your next posting at the 6th Engineering Support Regiment?
Yeah, it was a, it was a joining of the two squadrons together into a regiment, and I didn't leave, but yeah, that's, I posted back in there as a different position, as a plan operator.
And where geographically were you located for that work?
We stayed in Sydney. I wasn't there for the move, they're all in Ambly now.
And Ambly's in Queensland?
Yeah.
Now, your final, in your statement that's been made public, we've blacked out the unit of your final posting, but it commenced, did it not, in January 2016?
Correct.
And lasted through until your discharge from the Army on the 23rd of September 2020?
That's correct.
In the course of your career, you had a couple of promotions. You began as a private after training, is that right?
Yeah.
And then were promoted to Lance Corporal? When was that, do you recall?
Lance Corporal, it was 2013, 2014, somewhere around there.
And then what was the next promotion?
The next year, 2015 Corporal.
And you were getting ready for another promotion when some of the events will come to?
I had my sergeant promotion approved and my posting approved, and they were still at the point of my separation encouraging me to stay.
I'll just ask the operator to bring up the bottom of page 17 of your statement. You'll see at the bottom is the beginning of paragraph 122, and we'll come back to this paragraph at the end, because it's your, in effect, a summary of your experiences. But just the first line, I wanted to take you to. At the end of your career, you'll see you described it as a career of which you could be proud. What were the good, what was it about it that you felt was a matter of pride?
I had now become part of a tradition in the military of this country, that's a proud tradition. My grandfather served in World War II. I'm the only other member of my family to serve. I'm really proud. Before I broke my leg, I'd been posted to Fed Guard because I wanted to stand on Gallipoli at the centre top and be a part of that. Wasn't to be.
Nevertheless, you were a part of it in the sense that you were there for 15 years, and you also deployed twice to Afghanistan, did you not?
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, just go to that first deployment, when was that?
2007, 2008.
And how long were you in Afghanistan on that journey?
Four months.
Now, your statement refers to being exposed to significant kinetic warfighting.
Correct.
That's a term we've heard, but perhaps you could just remind us what kinetic warfighting means?
We were patrolling to a location and we had a mission. And we completed that mission and did what we needed to, to complete that mission. Commandos had their job, engineers had their job, and we worked together to get that job done.
In paragraph 30, you list some of the tasks that you're, were included in your duties. Could you just, just remind us of those?
Vulnerable points were found during the intelligence gathering part of the mission. They were pointed out to us as engineers that these were the places that we had disembark and walk in front of the vehicles. We would check for IDs, we'd check for command wires, we'd make sure that the patrol was safe until we got to a point where they were safe, and then we got back in the vehicles and continued.
Your statement gives a description, a brief description of your first combat contact, that's contact with the enemy. And there was air fighter assistance for you, and unfortunately, a private, whose name we're not referring to, was killed during that engagement. What, tell the Commission what, after that, it was necessary to do in respect of the private?
In what respect, sorry?
He had to be taken back.
Yeah.
To the base, how was that achieved?
Yeah, we were denied exfiltration of his body to be returned to the base. So we had to call NFAD in fire to get rid of fire that was coming from above. Couldn't get out of the area without that, so once that was gone, we carried his stretcher for eight hours during the night to get back to our start location so that he could be put on the chopper at that location and taken back to our base.
Yeah, I heard you say carried him by stretcher?
Yeah, by stretcher.
So walking on foot for eight hours?
Yeah.
Now, after the firefight, according to your statement, you conducted a sweep. Just, just what is a sweep? Don't give us the technical detail of how it's done, but just what is that word?
Part of our job was to make sure there was no more booby traps or anything in the area for when we were looking for weapons. We recovered weapons and ammunition to take back to the Afghan National Army. I'd been trained in forensics, basic course, three days in Kandahar. We'd been given a imaging device that scanned iris and did fingerprints. It was our job to do that with every person in the area, alive or dead. Yeah, you might want to go into the rest of that later, I'll leave it there.
Yeah. Well, you came across two deceased persons as a part of that sweep. How old were they, by your best estimate?
Having three children, being around small children a lot, I'd say that they were around 10 years old, 12 years old.
To the best of your knowledge, they had been shooting, they'd been off.
They, one was still behind the machine gun, the other was in a position where he was feeding him ammunition. It's quite obvious.
And do you put in a, well firstly, how does, what impact did it have on you to come across two deceased children who'd been engaged in combat for the other side?
It's not usual for children to be fighting. It's not usual for children to fire a machine gun. It's not usual for me to be inspecting their dead bodies. I expected men.
You made a post-contact report, did you? Was that in writing or orally?
No, upon returning to the base, every person was screened psychologically because of the casualty. And my recollection of events was different to the rest. And consequently, my whole engineer team was brought up in front of the commanding officer of the commandos and who said this? Because they had declared child and I was declaring children. That's when I discovered the term fighting age male.
Well, just to explain that, what was, there's a few points just to clarify there. Your recollection was different from other soldiers, was the difference about the number of children?
It wasn't that my recollection was different, it was that I've always been very open and honest with what I've done and what I've seen, and I have a problem, I can't tell a lie. Yeah, I think maybe I went into more detail than other people did.
So, just correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just trying to understand the detail here. Was the difference a matter of the way the matter was described?
Yeah, that's right. They wanted to describe it in a manner where only one child was killed, rather than three. So the fighting age male term, I, my belief, is created to make that possible.
Had you heard, had you heard the term fighting age male before?
No, it's never been mentioned, I'd never heard it.
And how did it get mentioned to you on this occasion?
From the commanding officer telling me that I was incorrect, and that I need to change my statement because there wasn't three children, there was only one.
And what about the terminology? Did the commander have something to say about that?
I didn't really go into that. He explained that in their country that children are blooded as warriors at an early age, and part of that is to kill soldiers from the opposite side.
Were you given any, leave aside the detail, like one or three is just a factual matter, but when you're dealing, when you have to write a report or give an oral report about who a person is, were you told what was the correct term to use in future?
No. Well, it was my debrief, they were my words. I wasn't instructed in what to say.
Did you learn about a requirement about using the term fighting age males?
No.
Did you ever have occasion to report about children again?
I have no idea, I have no idea what was mentioned.
Sorry?
I have no idea what was put in the report.
And I was talking about your own, in your own career?
In my own career.
Yeah, did you, if you had to refer to children again, in the context of?
No, they're children.
Sorry?
They're children.
You continued to use that term?
They are children.
Yeah, I'm just trying to ask, when you were dealing with your superior officers, you continued to use that term?
I told them exactly what I just told you. Children that were referred to as fighting age males.
In your statement, you say that you learnt about a requirement, and you learnt this from the commanders, you learnt that there was a requirement to specify enemy combatants in reports as fighting age males.
Correct. Am I getting something wrong here?
No, I'm just asking, just in what context did you learn that?
I've told you.
Can I, I'll just go to the next thing that you've mentioned is, because I saw this question before going into combat, even before you went to Afghanistan perhaps. before going into combat, even before you went to Afghanistan perhaps, were you given any training to prepare yourself psychologically for these kind of horrors and particularly that children might be involved in combat?
You can't, you just can't. If you haven't been in that situation, you have no clue until you've gone through it. Can't be trained for that. You don't know how you're going to react. You're not gonna, you don't know how you're gonna react to a mother and a baby. Can't train you for that.
And, and I take it there was no training?
No. We were made fit. We went to the gym, we ate lots of food, we lifted weights, we did nav exercises. We were ready for war. We knew how to use our equipment. But the psychological stuff, I think, is post-war. I just really don't know how much you can prep psychologically for something you've never seen before.
You mentioned that after the operation, there was a bit of a psychological debrief.
Yeah.
Um, how useful did you find that?
No, I started lying post my experience in Afghanistan because the way I felt they were trying to explain something away had now made me ashamed of what I'd been involved in. Because I felt if I've done something but they're trying to explain, so it's not so bad. Like, I thought I was one of the good guys up until that point.
Now, I'll just remind you, you know you can take a break whenever you need it.
This isn't gonna, this isn't gonna stop.
And we can keep going, it's up to you.
Yeah.
We'll keep going when you want to.
Keep going, keep going. I'll come back and it'll start again, so let's just keep going.
Um, was there, were the post-operational psychological debriefs or screenings, something that happened several times?
Yeah, they did something called a POPS on the way out of country that everybody did. It was, it was a generic screen. When I got back in country, I was flagged as someone who had a psychological problem from the war. Um, I went on to leave, they were trying to contact me on leave, I told them I'm on leave, I don't care. And by the time I got back to base, I was a flight risk and was, um, psychologically briefed several times a week from that point.
Well, just get, just on, you referred to the POPS, the psychological, uh, debrief. Um, a POPS, that's the post-operational psychology assessment.
Yeah.
Is that, was, did you just have one of those when you were leaving Afghanistan or did you have several along the way? And you mentioned...
I think there's another one when you return home.
Right.
It's like, I don't know, a six-week period or something, they do another one.
Earlier when we were discussing the, that first, uh, engagement with the enemy and the sweep and you found the two, uh, children, you referred to a, a screening or a psychological debrief at that point. Is that a reference to the POPS at the end of your entire deployment or was it, was there a different, different kind of debrief at the end of the engagement?
POPS is a generic one for every military member leaving country.
Yes. Was the, there a separate, or a different kind of debrief after the engagement?
No.
So it was just...
No, I wasn't spoken to again. I was, uh, I was kind of tarnished goods after that. I never went on another patrol. I volunteered for a patrol. Um, they had plenty of other people, they didn't need someone who was struggling, struggling with what they'd seen on the first one.
All right, let me just clarify that. When you say you never went on a patrol again, you had, you've described briefly the very first engagement.
Yeah.
That was also your last engagement during that deployment, is that?
Yeah, correct.
That's correct. And was that because, uh, somebody decided you should not do further?
Well, I'd already been chewed out by the CEO of Commandos, I don't think I was someone they wanted on a future patrol.
But is it the fact that you never had another patrol again?
Correct.
Um, and, and the criticism, what were you chewed out for?
Um, having a, like I said to you, I had a different, um, view on it.
Um, and there was no psychological support at that time, is that right?
No, we were, we were, we were still on mission, it was get back to work.
When you were leaving Afghanistan, who actually, I'm not looking for a name, but a particular connection as to the psychologist who conducted the POP? You put in your statement that it was the wife of one of your superior officers.
When I got back to my unit and was starting to get looked at as, are you still suitable to remain in the military? It was the wife of my transport sergeant because I saw his photo on her desk.
Yes, I'll just ask that the feed be cut for the, for the description of who the superior officer was and for non-publication order over that detail, but, uh, but not over the following. Uh, so the, the psychologist who was debriefing you was one, the wife of one of your superior officers.
Correct.
And how did that impact on your ability to...
I told her I didn't want to talk to her once I saw his picture. People talk, husbands and wives talk.
Um, were you referred for, to a different person to do a proper psychological assessment?
No, I did what I started to do for the rest of my career and I lied my way out of the office telling her I was starting to feel very good and I applied for a, um, TOIC position within my, um, section and, uh, I was encouraged that, oh, look, everything's turning around and I went back to work.
What did you feel was the, uh, benefit or what was the reason for lying in a psychological assessment?
I've always felt that I am the provider for my family. Um, we were trying for our first child.
And why would lying...
This was, this was to be my life. They were starting to say, you're not suitable to continue. You're not psychologically stable enough to continue. And I thought, I've only just got in. As much as that was traumatic, I'd just gone to war with my mates. I was loving it.
Nevertheless, um, you did have a second deployment to Afghanistan in two thousand and thirteen.
Hmm.
How long did that one last?
I was in construction at the time, it was another four-month deployment, it was the final deployment to Afghanistan. I was with a group called the Force Extraction Unit.
And, um, how, what was your, being honest with yourself, uh, what was your state? Uh, how were you feeling during that employment?
Uh, I was quite panicked. When I got out the back of the plane and saw the big bowl with all the mountains all around me, I was like, oh my God. I said I wouldn't come back here. Um, I was quite nervous the whole time. I told the other guys, don't play any jokes at night time. If you're going to jump out in the dark at me, I am going to pull my pistol. So just leave me alone.
Now, I just want to turn to a related subject, of course, but a new subject and that is your injuries and medical history during the army. You had, um, an operation in two thousand and eleven, what was that operation?
In when, sorry?
Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven. Oh, physical. My left shoulder had a reconstruction.
Your statement says you recovered and became fit again.
Correct.
Has since becoming fit again, have you had any relapse or aggravation or further injury to your shoulder?
No, shoulder works, thankfully.
In two thousand and twelve, you were doing, still doing rehab for the shoulder.
Yeah, correct.
But you had a, an injury to another part of your body, do you remember which, what was the second injury?
I couldn't use my upper body anymore, so I started training my lower body and getting into running and I had a, uh, ankle reconstruction a year after.
Because it was injured?
Yeah, I just, uh, I snapped it on the way to work, just come off a footpath.
And in two thousand and eighteen, a third significant physical injury, what?
Yeah, during sport, my knee popped out and because it popped out, as I landed, I fractured my tibia and, um, torn my ACL.
And that's the anterior cruciate ligament.
Hmm, correct.
Now, in two thousand and eighteen, now with both, with physical injuries and also struggling mentally, you went to see the AGP, uh, at the Soldier Recovery Centre. That GP recognized something that you needed. Could you just take us through what the GP recognized and what happened next?
I started to, my whole day was rehab for my knee. There was a certain point where I had to go back to work and I started to ask to have the rest of the day off. I think this happened with that doctor three or four times and he asked me what was wrong and I said, I don't know, I'm just panicked. I don't want to go to work. And that's when I started to talk to psychologists and that's the first time that I opened up and just spewed everything out.
And in the period after that, did you have dealings with two psychologists, one an army uniform psychologist, the other a contracted psychologist who was in the army reserve?
Correct.
And, uh, I don't think we need to go into detail, but your statement says they worked well together and...
Yeah, they were fantastic. They communicated well to each other. Every session I went to, they knew what had happened at the last session.
Uh, the commission has heard quite a lot of evidence about the MECC system, the, uh, Military Employment Classification System and all those letters with J in front of them, sorry, J numbers. You were downgraded in two thousand and eighteen to J three one.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, now, as we know, um, that involves restrictions and not being deployed.
Yeah.
What impact did that have on you and your...
Oh, it, uh, it turns you into what is kind of called a linger. You can no longer, uh, form up with the rest of the soldiers. Um, I can't touch weapons anymore, I can't teach courses anymore, I can't drive military vehicles anymore, I can't do anything. I come to work and I sit in a chair.
Did you say you were called a linger?
Hmm.
L I N G.
Malingera.
Right. But is, it, was there an abbreviated form of malingera?
Yeah, linger.
And, and how did, first, I'll, I'll separate a few, I'll put the name calling to one side, I'll get to that in a minute. But just the fact that you were restricted, um, in what you were permitted to do, how did that affect your mental wellbeing?
Uh, I, uh, I felt like I had no real reason. I, I've always been fit and strong. Um, at a time where I broke my leg, I had completed three separate hundred K races that year. I got obsessed with running and started doing ultra marathons, I was running seventy kilometres a week, training weeks on top of my PT at work. I was enjoying my life. I'd just done someone sergeant and was getting ready to go to my Fed Guard. Um, life was good. Once I broke my leg, I couldn't do anything. I was in a lot of pain. Uh, they were giving me morphine and endone and it wasn't taking the pain away, so I started to drink. And, hmm, that's when everything started to come out.
You've also mentioned that in this period of your life, you were having trouble with superior ranks. Um, and it led, it appears to you're appearing before an individual welfare board. Could you just tell us, um, what that was like, how it made you feel? Uh, what, what kind of experience it was to go to the welfare board?
Uh, I actually found it positive. I had a, a group of people around me that cared for me. Um, they wanted the best for me and that's when I went into the hospital the first time.
Um, according to your statement, you had been up until this period resistant to the suggestion that you might become an inpatient for mental health.
I didn't want...
You changed your mind?
I didn't want drugs, I pride myself on being healthy. Um, I didn't want to be addicted to anything. Uh, I had a small addiction to opiates during that two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve period because I had, actually had three surgeries during that time and I took endone for almost an entire year. So, post-getting away from that, I didn't want, um, yeah, I didn't want any of that anymore.
But you changed your mind and ended...
Yeah, because it wasn't working, I was getting worse, so I thought, well, I haven't tried drugs, maybe they'll work.
So you were admitted to St John of God Hospital at Richmond as an inpatient in two thousand and nineteen. Just, it was, how long was your first period in St John of God?
Three weeks. They run on a three-week cycle.
And we're not using names, but you were under the treatment of a doctor?
Yeah, psychiatrist.
Uh, and he adjusted your medication on a daily basis until...
It's the best they've ever been treated medically. They do blood tests on you to see where your levels are and adjust your meds like that. And I hit a point where I was stable. And I said, I remember saying to him one day, I found myself skipping down the hallway this morning and went, oh shit, I'm happy.
You actually discharged early.
That's when I went home.
I'm sorry?
That's when I went home. I didn't go home, I wasn't allowed to go home, had an AVO, but, um, no, I didn't at that time.
Well, after you discharged, you went and saw that, one of the GPs at the base who referred you to a different psychiatrist. We're not naming anybody, as you know, but it was a contracted psychiatrist for the ADF. Um, did that lead to a change in the way you were being treated?
Yeah, this psychiatrist took over and, uh, decided he had a different idea in terms to my medical treatment. As a person who's not medically trained, I didn't know what he was going to do was going to harm me. So when he decided to take me off my meds, that made me stable and put me on new ones without even referring to the psychiatrist's report. Um, yeah, that was the start of everything.
So I'm just going to get the operator to bring up a, a report from this psychiatrist, it's redacted. But the number's GTU, quadruple zero, triple zero one, double O one nine. And I'll just get the operator to blow up or expand the, the last paragraph so we can see the bottom paragraph of the page. You'll see there, Mr Tunstall, it says, "Without the St John of God Hospital Richmond discharge summary, I am unsure why Gavin was prescribed certain, uh, medicines." And then he reports, and I'll paraphrase, "He advised you to cease them and he prescribed a different regime." Um, you've got some comments about the approach of making a change without knowing why the previous doctor, um, had prescribed what was going well for you. What are your comments about this approach of proceeding without knowing what, what was, what was going on?
Uh, it was negligent. I didn't know at the time that, uh, stopping a drug on the spot is a bad thing. Um, I tried to take myself off all my meds recently and I ended up in emergency. So I have no doubt what he did led to what happened next.
So let's just take that one step at a time. Um, the change, did the change of medication cause you to start feeling differently?
Yeah, bad dreams.
Mr Tunstall, if you want to just, um, have a couple of minutes at any time, please take your time, we're not in a rush. And have a drink and we're happy to wait, there's no, no problem.
Thanks Commissioner. Yeah, bad dreams, night terror started. Um, locking myself away in my room, started isolating myself from all my friends. Um, anger, no tolerance of any noise. Um, yeah, pretty much locking myself away.
And again, we don't need to trouble you with the details, but...
Yeah, what you wanted to know.
You, 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 you became more argumentative with your wife?
Uh, we were under serious financial stress at the time. Um, the, yeah, there's so much to go into with that.
Yeah, I, I just want to take this, the big, the big ticket items.
Yeah, what do you want to know?
The, the short, the short fact is, is it not that a...
We're, yeah, we were under serious financial stress and, um, were arguing a lot.
Yeah.
Because there, there wasn't enough money.
And ear- early in two thousand and twenty, there was a domestic, uh,
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh, which led to your arrest.
Yeah.
When the, the New South Wales Police Sergeant turned out to be in the army reserve and said something, what did he say to you when you were being arrested?
Uh, he actually worked in Fire Brigade and, um, said that he was tired of arresting veterans.
And he's an army, he was an army major?
Yeah, that's right.
In the, in the reserves, did he?
Army major in reserves, uh, sergeant in the police force. He said, uh, I'm tired of arresting veterans and he had tears in his eyes.
Now, there are a few different streams to cover here and I'll try and do them as, uh, efficiently as possible. Um, but you were put on a return to work plan, I'm going back now to work, at the ADF in the army.
Correct.
You were on a return to work program and you say there's no, in your statement, "No one in the workplace talked to me as I was under a mental health rehab program." Was that just the attitude of your colleagues and mates or was there a policy that you should not be approached or was there some other explanation? Was that just the attitude of your colleagues and mates? Or was there a policy that you should not be approached? Or was there some other explanation?
There's still a particular stigma amongst men in the military with mental health. Um, I don't know if it's a lack of education or what it is, but um, I was now like a kind of an untouchable person.
In the years prior to this, had you ever received any training on how you might support other soldiers who were in distress or difficulty?
We did the start of year briefings on um, prevention of suicide and those kinds of things that everybody did every year, but there was no particular one-on-one training or other courses that we'd done.
Did, did the, the once a year briefing?
Yeah, everybody did.
Does, does that have information that should, that was useful, that you should have been benefiting from?
I felt like the chain of command were kind of, um, my case started to get too complex for them and they didn't know what to do with it.
You say in your statement that um, you were told that people like you were rotting the system. And you also heard the expression linger directed at you. I'm not looking for names or ranks or anything that would identify people, but were these fellow soldiers, um, the, the chain of command, both, neither? Can you give us a broad indication of where you were getting this kind of attitude from?
Uh, nothing was ever said to my face. I had uh, friends who were overhearing talk in the workplace. Uh, people were upset that I was getting such an easy time at home.
So you were getting the feedback from friends and they were trying to help you, but it was hurtful, was it?
Yeah, you just get people who don't understand what's happening and I don't really care about them. I don't give a shit about them. They don't understand. It's not my problem. I know what I'm going through.
Now, I just want to now go to clarify a couple of the details and the chronology. Just after your arrest, um, were you taken to Liverpool Hospital?
I was arrested, I was taken to Liverpool Police Station. I was held at Liverpool Police Station until a chain of command came and released me. I was taken to Liverpool Hospital. I was passed through the psych. And from there, I was taken back to one H S B on Holsworthy Barracks to be cleared by their psych team. And I ended up staying there for a while.
At the barracks?
Yeah, in the hospital.
You also, you, you came to be readmitted into the St John of God Hospital?
Yeah, well, I had a current A V O out against me, so being in the one H S B hospital was a limited time. I couldn't stay there, so it was uh, uh, med board reconvened. Uh, it was decided I'd go back to hospital. Um, it was somewhere where I could stay there long term to get me stable again.
So just correct, I'm going to go one step at a time and I think I've got most of this, but you correct me if I'm wrong. From, from your own home, you were taken to Liverpool Police Station first.
Correct.
Then to, your, your chain of command picked you up and took you to Liverpool Hospital.
Yeah.
From there, you were brought back to the barracks or the Holsworthy Base.
Correct.
You spent some time there. And the next place you were sent was St John of God at Richmond. Is that the right sequence?
Yeah, I was there for three months.
And now you're back under the care of the psychiatrist who had got you on a stable regime the previous.
Yeah, correct.
Now, just a thought to tie up a loose end, if I may, I'm going to ask the operator. While I'm asking you a couple of questions, I'll just see if we can bring up another document for us to look at, if I can just find the number. It's the, it's the third annexure, if the operator's able to find it, I'm just I'll just find the number for you. We'll come to that in a moment. The police laid a charge of assault and also commenced proceedings to obtain a, an apprehended violence order. We won't need to go through all the details, but I thought we should just ascertain this in ultimately about July twenty twenty. The charge was dismissed under section thirty-two of the Mental Health Criminal Proceedings Act in New South Wales. Uh, in other words, um, you were to be released without a conviction on the, on mental health grounds.
Yeah, into the care of psychiatrists and psychologists and my medical um, regimen.
And I'll just ask the, um, in the course of those proceedings, your lawyer obtained a report from the treating doctor at St John of God. Do you, do you recognize what's on screen as a little bit of the beginning of that report?
Yeah, correct.
I'll just get the operator to scroll down. So a little bit further to paragraph E.
Very familiar with that.
The doctor reports that at the time you were discharged the year before in, in late twenty nineteen. Your prognosis was good, but that that was contingent on medication being continued together with regular outpatient monitoring. I'll just mention that as context. I won't go over the page. Um, I'll, I will however, ask the operator now to go back to the statement, which is G T U, quadruple zero, triple O one, triple O one at page nine. What you've done in your statement is extract a little bit of the um, report from the doctor. At paragraph sixty-five, it's in the original document, but there are other pieces that we don't need to look at in the original. You have reproduced what the doctor said, that in part at least, as the, your the matter leading to the assault charge came out of deteriorating health, quote, as a result of the change in medication, unquote, by the other doctor.
Yeah, correct.
And, and so that was his professional opinion. Did it accord with your experience of your own life?
Oh, totally. When this happened, everyone was shocked. And every reference I got said this is not, uh, it's not my character, something out of the normal for me.
Now, your statement points out that a solicitor, who's also a major in the Army Reserve, uh, decided to act for you in a pro bono basis in the court proceedings. He's the solicitor for whom this report was written. Uh, that's Mr. Mo, Robert Moy, M double O Y. Did you make a phone call from St John of God to him while your chain of command or members of the chain of command were visiting you in the hospital?
Yeah, correct. I came to know uh, Mr. Moy by my own desperate struggles to find legal representation. Chain of command had turned off all help to me and were, um, so I was being helped by other patients in the hospital and happened to be a retired R S M. And he helped me and it was word of mouth that put me in contact with Mr. Moy and um, yeah, I was really happy to finally have found someone to help me.
So you're very happy at the beginning of the engagement and you were very happy with the services he provided.
Yeah.
While he did.
So I was in there trying to get better. I didn't want to be in there trying to research lawyers.
Yes. We won't go into the detail because I want to focus on how you were feeling about things. But to put the matter bluntly and very briefly, that you understand that the chain of command took certain actions to arrange for Mr. Moy to be removed from the case so that he could no longer act for you.
Uh, there'd been a few interactions between myself and Mr. Moy and the chain of command. It, it started to become obvious that they uh, they did not want him to represent me because they were, he was working for me and it was becoming obvious that they were working against me.
How did you, now, for reasons that ultimately appear not to have been valid, but um, on the part of the chain of command, in your opinion, but Mr. Moy wasn't able to finish the case for you?
No, he couldn't.
And that, to make it clear, because he was acting in an appropriately ethically restrained way. But um, how did it make you feel that the chain of command had arranged to use a neutral word for him not to act for you?
I was lost again. I had no one. I had no representation. My hope disappeared. And then to find out that it was my chain of command that did it. Yeah, just total betrayal.
I want to turn to your transition out of the Army. Circumstances discharged and what occurred afterwards. You say at paragraph ninety-three of your statement that your transition from the A D F took six months.
Yeah.
Is that the six months up until the date of discharge? Is that how you're measuring that?
Everyone at that time got three months extra because of, because of COVID and the inability to access the courses that were given to us to leave.
Was the three month COVID extension a part of the six months?
Yeah, correct.
Going to be three, it became six.
Yeah.
Now, by the time you were discharged, had you submitted a lot of D V A claims?
Yeah, all my claims were in.
And had you got any decisions about those?
They were all pending. Took three years.
So you left without any D V A financial support at, at the beginning?
We actually couldn't get out of our um, uh, accommodation that we were staying in, um, because at the time, it was the start of no one being able to get a rental. Um, so they not only had, I had no payout, not only had my pay turned to zero, um, they immediately put the rent up to market price. I think it was like something ridiculous, like six hundred dollars a week.
And who's the they? Who, who put up the rent?
Defence housing.
So you're in a defence house?
Yeah, and they were well aware of my situation.
Yes, and they discharged you, they put up your rent?
And so I was now civilian living in their accommodation.
How long, now, there were several claims, so how long did it take for all of the D V A claims to be resolved?
Twenty twenty-one. During that year.
And to, to abbreviate it or summarize it, you got over seven hundred thousand dollars in compensation?
Yeah.
Less ten percent.
My family was gone by then.
I'm sorry?
My family was gone by then.
And you had to pay ten percent in fees to an advocacy service?
Yeah, psychiatrist that I saw in Southport while heavily medicated, um, was putting veterans into this company that were in Singapore. And they took over the work for you and they charged you a fee which ended up being seventy thousand dollars.
Just a couple of big, very important issues I want to raise, but very briefly because they are sensitive and they affect people. One of the effects of your circumstances is that you lost your family.
Correct.
And you're now a single man.
Correct.
And the situation, not, not only did you lose your family, but it all had an adverse impact on them.
Yeah, I left my family, um, my behaviour, um. Yeah, give me a second.
And another, another matter, just to mention very briefly, is it, the details, some of the details are in your statement. But we won't, won't go through them because the commissioners can read it. But you experienced significant suicidal ideation in, in this period.
Yeah, after they left.
I'll ask the operator to bring up the last page of the statement, which is double O one eight. You've listed some uh, suggestions here that the commission could consider pursuing. We won't read them all out, but um, I just want to use the first one to remind us all of a matter that's in your statement and I haven't yet mentioned. You suggest that when a member is undergoing an inpatient program for mental health issues, he or she should not be required to answer any administrative or service inquiry. Did you have an experience of dealing with a chain of command? Or at least there was, there would have been a dealing except for the intervention of the doctor? Could you tell us about that?
My chain of command wouldn't stop coming. Every time they came, they were trying to uh, uh, put a administrative discharge onto me. One of the first times they came, I was told, uh, it's happening anyway. There's no use fighting it. The page was presented with the signature, just sign it, everything will go away and you can just get on with your life. Post having Mr. Moy representing me, he took over my decisions because I was too medicated to be making them. And um, yeah, that's when the problem started.
Did you learn that there was an occasion when it was expected that the chain of command was going to bring to the hospital and serve on you and notice to show cause why you shouldn't be terminated?
That major told me, I don't care who tells me, I can't come to the hospital, I'll be coming to the hospital. So after they had heard that, it was arranged that if any people in a uniform, military uniform turned up, I was to be put in my room with the door shut until I could make them leave the premises.
And who, who arranged that?
The psychiatrist and the nursing staff.
Ultimately, um, there was an effort or a procedure commenced for your administrative discharge?
Yeah.
But it didn't uh, go through?
I had to put together a statement. I ended up having someone represent me from Canberra, one of the army legals. Um, it came back as to be shelved until later notice to let me proceed with my medical discharge that was almost completed at the time.
And in the end, your discharge was on medical grounds?
Correct.
I want to thank you very much for your statement as well as your evidence today. There's obviously more detail in the statement than we need to go to today or can. But could I, I'll just ask the operator to bring up paragraph one hundred and twenty-two. It goes over two pages, double O one seven and double O one eight. I took you to this paragraph earlier. This is the paragraph I mentioned that in a sense summarizes, puts it all together from a career point of view. And the first line is the one I mentioned before, a career of which I was proud. And then the second sentence describes, you describe yourself as a broken man who would lose his wife and family and who now lives alone. Could I just ask you to conclude from my questions before the commissioners ask you any questions? Just to read that last sentence, beginning, I struggle, or last two sentences, beginning at I struggle. If you're able.
I struggle every day with the pain of my physical injuries and the mental anguish of my service. My life will never be the same again.
Commissioners, those are the evident, the questions that I have, I'll yield to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Tunstall, thank you very much for your evidence today. I, I just want to go back to when you returned from your first deployment. It sounds from what you described as though you were experiencing some psychological issues at that time.
Yeah.
And you recognized that. And indeed, it sounds from what you said, as though the Army recognized that. But was there assistance actually provided for you at that time?
No, the tempo of the unit was so high that uh, we were always doing something or going somewhere or preparing to go somewhere and those especially a soldier that throws himself back into his work and wants to continue and be doing his job, uh, they just get swept away.
And, and so it was that circumstance rather than, I guess what I'm just trying to sort out in my mind is whether or not you felt that you needed to not continue disclosing your psychological need because of any potential impact on your career and indeed deployment, future deployment opportunities?
It'll be all in my medical records, but I was flagged at several points during my military career as having anger issues. And because I was so active within my job and wanting to do my job and wanting to be deployed, they just disappeared. I never got any formal work done on them.
And after you had had the, jumping forward then a number of years and you had, had um, the medical downgrade, you were J thirty-one and you said you just had to come to work and sit in a chair. Was that, I mean, I can only imagine the impact that would have on anyone's mental state. Did you have a sense that that was something that was specific to you? that was specific to you or did that reflect from your understanding how anyone with a mental health rehab plan was likely to be treated?
Three members of my immediate, um, group that I worked with had, uh, discharged medically due to mental health previous to that. These members got quite aggressive towards the end of their time and were separated from the workplace and spent the rest of their time discharging at home or in a medical facility where no one interacted with them. We were told not to contact them. They wanted to be left alone. Because I continued to try to rehab and try to return, I wanted to do my job, I was excited about becoming a sergeant. Um, they had to keep trying to reintegrate me into the workplace, but I think their style of reintegration needed some work.
Hmm. So you wanted to continue?
Really wanted to continue.
Hmm, but the?
I, I would still love to continue.
The assistance?
I've met in the military, one of my friends just went to, uh, Europe for a month as part of his gold commendation and toured every war site, helped intern seven unknown soldiers and I followed his every step and I'm so proud of him. And we come through every promotion course together. I wanna, I wanna be there with him.
Hmm. And, and again, I mean, you talked about the stigma. People talking, not necessarily directly, um, to your face, but?
They don't generally do that.
Yeah, but this, just be really clear, we're talking about in the last two years.
Correct.
This is, this attitude?
It's still the opinion there at the moment.
That's kind of where I was going.
My friends are still there and we talk often and it's still the major opinion of the time.
Yeah.
Because you should be hard enough to continue and if you don't continue, you're too soft and you need to leave. Because, uh, friends told me, harden up, stop talking about all this shit. Start exercising, get off your arse and get back into life. I couldn't explain to them that I, I couldn't, I just couldn't.
Seeing as somehow you are the problem rather than recognising?
I'd never given up on anything in my career. This was hard.
Hmm. I, I can absolutely see.
Especially when you pride yourself as being a fit, strong, active soldier who's an example to his subordinates and you break in front of them. It's difficult.
And just in line with what you were saying around the attitudes, I think you were describing that lack of compassion from chain of command. So it's not just your, um, peers, it's up and down the ranks.
I will say that my chain of command did a great job, uh, up until my arrest. I had good support, uh, up at the hospital, GPs, physios, the psychologists that I seen. Great support. As soon as I was arrested, it became a, uh, a criminal matter and everything switched off. Um, and I even asked my warrant officer at the time, will you be honest with me? Is it because I was arrested? And he said, yes, we can't help you anymore.
So regardless of the circumstances that may have contributed to that arrest?
Yeah.
It was?
Yeah, line in the sand, you've done too much, we're not helping you. We'll actually start working against you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Douglas?
Thanks very much for the courage you've shown in coming to speak to us. I don't have any further questions next.
Thanks, Commissioner. Um, Mr Tunsil, I just have a couple of very brief points I want to clarify, just in relation to Mr Mui, your solicitor. And I think our transcript may not be entirely accurate. He didn't do anything wrong. He simply went hard on your behalf.
That's right.
And then ultimately he was exonerated completely.
He's a very passionate man. He, uh, does a fantastic job. And I think his demeanor was a little too much for those officers to handle. They started to take it personally and their, uh, role in that from that point seemed to be a personal problem rather than a professional issue.
Okay, I just, I'm, I'm not sure if our transcript was entirely accurate, but I just wanted to sort of put that to bed. Um, the other issue was just in relation to the attempts to have you transition out while you're in fact you were in, in an institution. And I know you've gone over it, uh, with Mr Singleton, but, um, I think you mentioned something about the, your chain of command saying they don't actually care who says to them, they cannot come on the premises. They intended to serve papers on you.
That was the attitude of my O C. It was that military kind of attitude of, I'm a major, people don't tell me what to do, I tell them what to do.
Yeah, and I, I also wanted to thank you for your recommendations for us to consider, which touched on that point.
Hmm.
Um, I can assure you, you're not the first person to bring that problem to our attention. Where attempts are made to transition someone when they really are in, in desperate need of help and not in a position to make any sound decisions.
I was just heavily drugged as I'd ever been in my life in that hospital. I had no business even talking to them.
Thank you. Um, Mr Pearce, are there any matters you wish to bring up?
Just briefly, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Mr Tunsil, for the last hour and seven minutes or thereabouts, I've been listening to you make your life an open book. Uh, very personal things you've attested to. Could you tell the commissioners why you've done that?
I'm here today for all my brothers and sisters, it can't be.
You, in conference with me last week, spoke about the possibility that you might bring with you today a photograph of a friend. Do you like to expand upon that issue?
I had a manhood I'd served with, who I bumped into after ten years of being apart from him in the car park of a, um, a private hospital. We both go into separate appointments and we got to know each other again and we both found out we're having mental issues and he became a friend that I talked to, uh, online a lot at night time when I was awake at three and he was as well and uh, when I went to St John of God, he'd been there previously and he was guiding me through because I didn't want to be there. And the day I discharged, he, uh, decided he'd had enough and, um, he ended his life.
So you speak for him as one of your friends?
I speak for you today, mate.
All right. Since your discharge, what contact, if any, have you had from the A D F?
Uh, zero. I get sent, uh, a survey every now and again that I delete. That's about it.
It's, um, a common practice within a unit that when someone takes retirement or discharge, that there's a celebration, morning teas held, something of that nature. Did you, were you afforded that, that opportunity?
No, I was handed my fifteen-year medal by the C O, um, in his office with no one else there. Um, and, uh, I was in my civvies and I just went home. I didn't see them again. There was no unit plaque, there was no farewell, there was no reading my military achievements in front of my peers.
All right. I'll move on to another issue now, concerns medicinal P H C which you approved. Now, I understand you've received D V A approval to take medicinal cannabis?
That's correct.
What, what are the practical difficulties, if any, that attach to that?
Uh, I've discovered that every time I change GPs, if the GP has uh, approved the medicinal cannabis or the T H C oil, it has to be started again from the beginning. I'm in my second process of having it approved, still not approved. Um, I'm now buying my own marijuana because it was actually suggested to me by a GP that that'd be a quicker process.
And are there some issues that attach to you buying, other than the obvious issue, the legality of it at all? Are there issues, practical issues that attach to you using cannabis as opposed to the prescribed cannabis?
Well, uh, either one, I can't drive. Um.
Is one easier to take than the other?
Uh, one's, one's real easy and, uh, T H C can be microdosed, so I'm not going to turn into a stoner. Smoking marijuana hits you all at once. I'd rather have the medically provided substance.
We've heard some evidence from you this afternoon about allegations of domestic violence. What impact, if any, did the fact that you were accused of domestic violence have upon your ability to seek and receive services from the various support services that do exist?
Um, it seemed to shut them all down.
And you, you were not formally convicted of any offence of domestic violence in New South Wales, were you?
That's correct.
And that was because of the mental health issues that you were then experiencing?
Yes.
And can you, are you able to offer the commissioners an example of how the support services were removed from you?
Um.
Thinking in terms of the, the sailing activity that?
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I, I discovered through Soldier On, uh, sailing through the Royal Prince Alfred Yacht Club. I really enjoyed it. It was really peaceful and quiet on the water. I was really mindful, all I had to do was watch the sail and see when it was full of wind and adjust the rudder and it was, it was good. Uh, post-arrest, uh, I wasn't really welcomed there anymore. It was like I was a person that didn't fit into that environment anymore and I never did it again.
And you believe that was connected to the charges that were, the charge that was brought against you? Is that the situation?
Uh, I started to realise that everyone knew about it now and I wasn't to be, I wasn't to be, uh, afforded any kind of help anymore.
Did Mr Moy assist you with the domestic violence matter?
Uh, early on, we were putting it together before he was investigated.
And as you understand it, the complaint against Mr Moy was that he was effectively working too hard to get support for you?
Yeah, from what I understand, it was said that he was using his rank to bully the, uh, the rank below him.
And that was to prevent people attending on you when you're an inpatient?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Um, in terms of the services that are available to you post-discharge, have you affected been, effectively been left to your own devices in terms of seeking out and securing support?
Yeah, so my first support that I found, it was very interesting listening to the R S L the other day because, um, being taken out of the military and put into civilian life, you kind of just released. Uh, I had to find all my support myself. And once I started to connect with the community and connect with the veterans, my recovery started. And it was through that connection that I discovered Terry Bowman and did the, uh, Brain Wellness Spark course.
And has that come at some financial cost to you, seeking out the various support services?
Terry was wanting to put a veteran through her course, she hadn't done it yet. And she was wanting to get evidence-based research so that she could be, um, acknowledged by um, D V A to offer this support to other veterans. Uh, my treatment went very well, went remarkably well. I so I hadn't been that happy for a long time after that.
And you paid for that?
I didn't pay for that. Terry, Terry did that to provide research to D V A and now she's been approved to offer her services to uh, veterans, which is fantastic.
Have you paid out of your own pocket for other services?
Yeah, this year I've spent $15,000 of my own money. Uh, I took a break after Terry and I hit a point where I knew I had still more work to do and I'm very proactive in wanting to heal from this. And I've, um, I've one male mentor who's coaching me and another, um, Jessica, who's working on timeline therapy and deep hypnosis work with me. And, uh, another group who I've been doing retreats with to work on anger and fear and pain.
One last question. Um, what do you see as your life's destiny?
Hmm. I want to help. I was a veteran in the dark. I'm now starting to get out of it. I want to offer that to other people like myself who are stuck. I don't want anymore to take their life. And I have an interest in scuba diving and I found a, a man who's ex-Navy, who runs a PTSD style, um, training to help people with PTSD discover the benefits of being underwater. And I've done my scuba diving training up to advanced and I want to be an instructor and I want to work in that industry, giving back and talking to veterans. And once I meet them, I can start to pass on my experience and start to help. I'm not sure in what capacity, but that's where I'm at with that so far.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr Pearce. Mrs Singleton, any matters arising?
Uh, no matter arising, could the witness be thanked and, uh, excused?
Um, excuse me. I, uh, there's been, there's been a part that I wanted to talk about that no one's asked me.
We have time. Please go ahead.
Yeah. It concerns helped family. I've received a myriad of help. Um. My family pretty much lost their, um, provider. Uh, my kids lost their dad. My wife. My, my wife lost her husband. They're sitting down there in Harrington with no support on government housing. My three children are living like poor people. And there's no assistance, no one talks to them. My wife's very angry at what's happened. We were meant to be together until we were old. And that's been taken away. And I'm getting help, but they're getting, I'm not allowed to swear, they're getting nothing. And that, um, it's a common story. It's a very common story. And my children have been damaged psychologically, so has my wife. And I want to see more help for families. That's one thing I'd love to get across from all of this. Because those families, my wife fought for me a long time till she couldn't anymore. Want to thank her for that.
Just ask that the feed be cut on the name there.
Yes, it would be so ordered, thank you. Um, Mr Tunsil, we can't thank you enough for your evidence today. We know it's not easy. I can't tell you, I know what you've been through. I haven't, I can't. But it's very important for people to hear your story and to hear stories like yours. It's the only way we're going to know what the problems are and the only way we're going to fix them. Thank you again. Your excuse from your summons to appear today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
If I may have the commissioner's leave to withdraw.
Thank you, Mr Pearce. Thank you. Mr Singleton, are there any other issues?
No other matters.
Okay, we'll just adjourn briefly for fifteen minutes. Okay. Thank you again.
All rise.
The Royal Commission is adjourned for a brief break.
The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide has resumed. Please be seated.
Good afternoon, Mr Connor.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Commissioners, this afternoon we'll hear from Dr Jonathan Lane. I call Dr Lane.
Dr Jonathan Lane, do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Operator, please display the tender bundle list for Dr Lane. Commissioners, there's nine items on the tender bundle list. I tender those items.
Thank you, Mr Connor. They'll be accepted and allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers.
Commissioner, may I take a few minutes to provide a brief frame for the documentary material and for Dr Lane's evidence? Commissioner's item two on the list is Dr Lane's response to a notice to give where he was asked 22 questions and he's provided a detailed response extending over 85 pages. Commissioners, I won't be going in detail to many segments of that response. Commissioners, item five on the tender list is the Gears participant manual. That's dated September 2020 and it is a very substantial document. It was developed by Dr Lane and Dr Lane will come to speak more in detail of Gears. Gears stands for Group Emotional and Relationship Skills and this is the participant manual. Dr Lane will explain that involves group therapy over 12 sessions. Commissioners, Dr Lane developed the Gears programme from what is known as STAIR. STAIR is the acronym for Skills Training in Effective and Interpersonal Regulation. Commissioners, that is the participant manual for that is at item five of the, sorry, item six of the tender list. The Commissioners, there's some similarity between the two programmes and Dr Lane has adapted and developed in his Gears programme material from the STAIR programme, but there are important differences between the two and important developments. Commissioners, Dr Lane in section two of his response explains his history with the STAIR programme. This arose in part from Dr Lane winning a Churchill Fellowship and going to America for a period of time and coming into contact with the people who had developed the STAIR programme. Commissioners, item nine on the tender list is concerns, it's an article, an important article, referred to by Dr Lane concerning cultural competency. In the particular context of this Royal Commission, military cultural competency. Commissioners, Dr Lane refers in various parts of his response to cultural competency. I refer, Dr Lane does so in section seven of his response, which explains the importance of cultural competency, especially as it relates to work with veterans. Commissioners, in section nine, Dr Lane speaks of what is required for effective cultural competence in relation to the, in the military context. In section 11 of his response, Dr Lane explains how the Gears programme builds cultural competency among its peer facilitators. And that is a very important notion, the involvement of peers in the Gears programme. Dr Lane, might you tell us a little bit about your history from your joining the Australian Army in 1989 as a 17-year-old? And how your journey so far has influenced your work in the defence and veteran and police and other first responders, mental health space?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. I joined the Army in 1989 when I was in year 12. I wasn't a very good student at the time and came across a defence recruiting stand in the shopping mall next to the college I was at and just joined up on a whim.
Excuse me, Dr Lane, you might have to come a little bit closer to the microphone there or move the microphone towards you.
Yep. Sorry, apologies for that.
And a little bit more slowly for the transcript.
Yes. I subsequently then enrolled at ANU and didn't attend there very much either, which shouldn't be a surprise in hindsight. And then went and joined the full-time Army in 1990. Now, I had effectively 10 years as a soldier, working in logistics in a field environment and then personnel administration and even some recruit training sort of duties as well too. But I also still figured I had to have either a trade or an education and I enrolled in a part-time Bachelor of Arts in 1993, I think, yeah, 1993. And did that English Lit and Psychology part-time until 1997. I then decided I wanted to do medicine and in 98, I left the full-time Army, went back to the reserves and did my honours year in psychology and year 12 biology so I could do medicine. In 1999, I was accepted into the School of Medicine here in Hobart at University of Tasmania. And in 2000, went back into the regular Army as a sponsored undergraduate medical student. And I finished my Bachelor of Medical Science in 2002 and then my medical degree at the end of 2004. In 2005 and 2006 concurrently, I worked, did my intern year at the Royal Hobart Hospital in my residency as well. And then I started my full-time Army Return of Service work at Holsworthy in 2007. And so that was working as a general duties medical officer. I was still very interested in mental health and at that particular time, you know, we had soldiers coming back from Afghanistan and Iraq and various other conflicts. And so the mental health rates that I was seeing just as a doc were, you know, high. I was lucky enough to have a very supportive CO when I was at One HSB. And I sort of started doing some part-time psychiatry training in 2009. But then had to go obviously full-time to do it properly and hence the move back to Tasmania from Sydney. And then doing my full-time psychiatry registrar training. In 2013, I was deployed, well nominated and accepted and then trained up to deploy to Afghanistan. And we basically spent from March to December of that year training and then deployed. And then six months of that was at the Roll Three Hospital in Kandahar in the south of the country. And that was working with the mental health team as a psychiatrist, even though I hadn't actually finished my formal psychiatry training at the time. I finished my fellowship in 2014 and then started working in private practice so I could see military and veterans. Because, you know, there's no public, there's no way to see veterans in the public system within the state. In 2018, I decided, well, I started doing a PhD and that was the evaluation of the Skills Training in Effective Interpersonal Relationships Programme, the STAIR programme that council discussed before. I've still been working part-time as a clinician. I've been working as a senior lecturer in psychiatry at the University of Tasmania. And then also working very part-time with the Department of Veterans Affairs. And then also with Military and Emergency Services Health Australia or MESHA, who we've been running the Gears programme with as well.
You're presently a reserve lieutenant colonel in the Third Health Battalion?
That's correct, yes. As still an active duty reserve member as well.
And just going back to your, the Holsworthy period, when you're doing your return of service work as a junior medical practitioner. What, just a moment or two on what you observed on the returning people coming to Holsworthy?
So just for context, an RMO or a regimental medical officer basically works as, normally works as a part of a primary care health team. And so that's doing everything like a general practitioner would do, but with more of a focus on emergency and remote medicine as well. And what I was seeing was, you know, soldiers who had their own stories, but also stories of other soldiers as well too. And, you know, at the same time when that was going on, we had people coming back from Timor. We had Afghanistan, Iraq, as I said, that was going on. Then there was the Jake Kovko incident as well too from Iraq. So there was a lot of mental health issues, I suppose, being raised by soldiers and that were coming through the hospital, you know, and people being on the wards overnight because they had to be, you know, watched because of threats of suicide or self-harm or various other sorts of things as well too. And so in general, the burden of mental health presentations was just going up and up and up. And because I had that psychology background and an interest in mental health, I often ended up, you know, seeing a lot of these people.
And in your six months in Kandahar, you were with the US Navy-led Roll Three NATO multinational medical unit?
Yeah, so that's a mouthful and it's abbreviated as the Roll Three, basically because it's the Roll Three NATO MMU. But that was led by the US Navy at the time and they couldn't fill one of their psychiatry positions. And this is why I was invited to be embedded and work with that particular rotation. And so this was doing all of the normal duties of a military psychiatrist. And it was a huge eye-opener for me because we didn't employ psychiatrists at the time in the Defence Force. And, you know, as someone who'd been in the Army, you know, for 24 years at that particular point in time, I'd always struggled to sort of, you know, come across the construct of what, what does a military psychiatrist look like? What are the qualifications and those sorts of things? And for me, that was a mix of general adult psychiatry, drug and alcohol abuse, and then forensic psychiatry in terms of the paperwork. And that's the way I'd shaped my psychiatry training. And that ended up being incredibly useful during that particular time because the work there involved, you know, assessments of people who were suicidal, acute mental health presentations, you know, including people that were psychotic, command-designated assessments. And so that was for people who'd breached various, you know, whose performance was problematic or had breached various, you know, military discipline regulations. And then assessments for pharmacotherapy and those sorts of things as well. And so that was a very formative period of my time. And as far as I'm aware, that was the first time we've had a psychiatrist deployed and employed in a combat zone since Vietnam. And that to me is sort of fairly telling in the sense of the lack of, you know, psychiatric capacity that I, you know, was desperate to learn about but couldn't learn about. And, you know, unless I'd actually had that particular deployment experience.
Now, in, I think it's January 2018 that you commenced your PhD work. Would you mind, and that was under the supervision of Dr or Professor Miranda Van Hoff, Dr Ellie Lawrence and Professor Sandy McFarlane A O, all from the Centre for Traumatic Stress Studies at the University of Adelaide. Would you tell us a little bit more about your, what inspired you to do the PhD study for a start? And then also the, what you'd done in that?
Hmm. So it's a fairly long backstory, so I'll apologise in advance. But when I came back from Afghanistan just before Christmas in 2013, I was quite depressed and, you know, struggled to get help for myself as, as, you know, as a person, you know, who'd had those experiences. One of the biggest problems was, you know, trying to get the psychiatrist I'd seen to understand what I was actually going through or what I felt was wrong with me. And I couldn't explain it very well. And that was fairly depressing in and of itself because I was thinking, here's me, you know, with my educa- because I was thinking, here's me, you know, with my education and qualifications and experience and if I can't, you know, talk, you know, effectively about what I've been through, how hard is it for everyone else? I was lucky enough to get a Churchill Fellowship and went to the US in two thousand and fifteen and I actually caught up with a bunch of the psychiatrists and people that I'd deployed with. And I looked at one of the big Veterans Affairs hospitals in Milwaukee and spent a couple of weeks there looking at inpatient and outpatient programs, how their version of open arms so that the outpatient VA counselling services operated. Went to Colorado and again looking at inpatient and in particular intensive inpatient programs. And I also went to San Francisco and that was the Palo Alto Veterans Affairs Hospital. And this is where I met Professor Marilyn Cloto and came across the STAIR program. But one of the other biggest things that was there was some peer outreach work that was being supervised by one of the psychiatrists there, Dr Shelly Jane. And this was because California and that area of California has a huge regional and rural population as well, too. And if it's three hours' drive, you know, to get from the hills and those sorts of things outside San Francisco, it's really hard for people to get treatment. So in many ways, what was going on there reflected the situation that I'd come from in Tasmania. And, you know, in regional Australia as well, too. And that's the lack of qualified and not just qualified, but actual clinicians. The other problem that was going on was that at the time, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and even eighteen, I was getting hammered, I suppose, by just the sheer number of referrals for people looking for clinical treatment. And, you know, I still get at least three referrals a week now. And this is the problem because there's no way I can see and meet the demand. And, you know, that had a huge cost on me personally. But part of that sort of process for developing this group program was the fact that if the services didn't exist, then we obviously had to fill that gap and do something to create them. And I ended up running a version of the STAIR program here in Hobart with the ex-service organization Mates for Mates in two thousand and sixteen. And I'd modified the program slightly because the program itself wasn't, it was a fairly blank canvas apart from some general guidelines on activities and those sorts of things. And that first program was a huge success. And that then, you know, in conjunction with my clinical experiences at the time, made me sort of understand that everyone that I was seeing had lots of similarities in common. And most of those similarities were difficulties in their daily functioning, in their daily lives, managing their emotions and just maintaining effective relationships. And that trial group showed me that this could actually work and confirmed my clinical sort of hunches, I suppose you'd say, and hence why I then decided to do it properly and do it through a PhD. Because the problem as a clinician is a lot of our work is influenced by research. But, you know, it's that, does the tail wag the dog or does the dog wag the tail? Because research informs clinical practice, but clinical practice also informs what research needs to be done. And a big part of the gap in that, in my opinion, was where's the voice of, you know, lived experience in that? And as a clinician, you know, the clinical practice guidelines were telling me you should be doing this, this, this and this. But from a clinical perspective, I was having people come through my door and what they were doing wasn't working very well for them. And then, you know, from the veteran and first responder patients I had, what they wanted wasn't necessarily what we were being told to do either. And that voice of lived experience was therefore huge. And it's particularly because constantly I was being told and had experienced myself that when you talk to clinicians, they just don't get it. Yeah. And that, I think, is the power of, you know, incorporating lived experience. And then from the other, you know, really fundamentally important part of the research program was using peers to deliver these psychoeducation and skills-based interventions because you don't need to be a clinician for that. And more importantly, doing it in a group format, which we'll discuss later, you know, has other significant benefits as well as the cost benefits as well, too, let alone the time benefits. And so to my mind, living in a regional area that doesn't have any intensive or doesn't have any dedicated hospital beds, no dedicated hospital programs, no intensive outpatient programs and in fact, no formal programs for military veterans and first responders at all, the only way I could see to fill that gap was to utilize community-based organizations to deliver these sorts of community-based education, stabilization and skills-based interventions. And again, no clinicians, can't get them to do it. And in fact, they don't necessarily understand it because they don't have the cultural expertise that the lived experience peers have. And that was then the reason for doing this huge sort of project. And the PhD itself is, you know, quite different, I suppose, because it's talking about the evaluation of a program itself, but it was also modifying the program, but then evaluating, you know, and developing a cohort of peers to actually deliver the program in the first place. And that's something that's pretty much unique in the world in the way that we're doing this. But again, coming from, you know, a relatively resource-poor area, this was a model that I was looking at for regional and rural areas where you don't have clinicians, but you can have people who you can train up to deliver a specific intervention. So again, apologies for the long answer.
No apologies necessary. Now, just to apply a few labels, the MG STAIR outcomes, that was the initial pilot study.
That's the modified group STAIR program that I evaluated for the PhD and then that led on to the development of the Gears program.
Commissioners, in section three of Dr Lane's response from pages six to thirty, Dr Lane speaks of the history of this, adapting the STAIR program first into the MG STAIR outcomes project, pilot project, and then ultimately into Gears. Might we come back to some fundamental ideas, as it were? One is the notion, the concept of emotional regulation and emotional dysregulation. Would you speak, inform us about what does that entail? What is emotional regulation?
Commissioners, one of the most fundamentally striking things of seeing, you know, veterans and first responders who've, you know, had experiences of trauma is how dysregulated they are. And colloquial way of saying is they're effectively a hot mess. And what that is, is effectively emotional dysregulation or the experience of distress or other distressing emotions such as anger, shame, guilt, you know, frustration, all of those sorts of things tangled up and then impacting them on a daily basis and then on a moment-to-moment basis as well, too. And the reason that it has such a huge impact is that we're talking about people who've been very competent and very functional in their lives. Otherwise, they wouldn't have gotten into the military in the first place and they certainly wouldn't have served for as long as they did. It's also particularly hard for people because a huge part of military service and again, first responder service is the capacity to tolerate distress. And a simple example of that is, you know, going through basic training when, you know, that's a fundamental thing that you have to learn. You put under physical, mental and emotional pressure in, you know, with significant time constraints and, you know, people yelling at you and lots of things designed to sort of, you know, knock you down basically and then build you up in a way that's more desirable for that organization. Simple things like, you know, pack marching or physical training, PT. You have to be able to tolerate the distress of that, you know, the anxiety, the exhaustion, the whatever else, so that you can get the job done. And so a big part of military training is actually about, first of all, learning to tolerate distress, but then secondly, managing and tolerating that stress and distress by putting it in a box, by learning to ignore emotions because they just get in the way of doing the job. And in terms of the cultural context and frame for that, it's really important to recognize is that the better you can squash distressing emotions, the better you can do your job. If you're anxious or scared or afraid, you ignore that and you just jump off that, jump out of that aeroplane, go and do this, go and do that, go and do whatever it is. But more importantly, from the cultural context and in terms of ourself and ourself-identity, by being able to do that and do the job well, that's how you validate your sense of self and your self-worth. And the better an operator you are, the better you can actually cope with really tough, difficult things and do the job and do it effectively and fast. And then you can turn around and do the job again. Now, when you think about the way, you know, the military operates, it's a high-stress job in many ways. And, you know, the situations that you encounter and those sorts of things can be quite traumatic. But first and foremost, the mission comes first. And so again, when you see someone who, whose emotions are starting to spill and they're not staying in the box, oftentimes what happens is they will try and then eventually they will start to decompensate. But it's only when they can't contain themselves anymore and they can't perform that they actually then, you know, start to seek mental health treatment. And when you think about it, that process can take a few years and it can be a gradual decline over years. And it's only again, when their performance suffers, that, you know, they're forced to or they decide to go and seek help. But this is a problem because now the emotions that used to be buried spill over and they're uncontainable and they're dangerous and most importantly, they're horrid to experience. And so you have these people who are tough, you know, ten-foot tall, bulletproof and now crying in a supermarket. Doesn't make sense, does it? But this is the problem too because when you think about, you know, the nature of emotions and emotional regulation, they're fundamental to being able to function in society and they were fundamental to that person being able to operate well in the military or as a first responder or whatever else and to a very high standard. And one of the seminal articles I read about this was by Stanley and Larson in two thousand and nineteen. And this isn't in the, it's in the reference list, but I don't think it's in the added list. But they were talking about, you know, the reason that being in the military leads to emotional regulation problems. And it was exactly the stuff that I've just been talking about here and now. And I thought it was awesome because it was all the stuff that I'd sort of worked out and believed and then I saw it in an article and went, yes, thank you, now I've got someone to quote. But this was the sort of the point. And so when I was seeing people coming through my rooms, if they couldn't do these basic things like, you know, keep themselves together in the supermarket, how were they going to be able to tolerate the psychotherapy or the various other sorts of things? And so again, doing this thing one-on-one for everyone that's coming through is very time-consuming and inefficient. And that was even more motivation again to get this program up and going. But what we're talking about here is just one of those key fundamental skills of being able to function in society. Because if you don't have, you know, distress tolerance and emotional regulation skills, then you can't keep effective partners, you certainly can't keep a job, you're always getting into conflict and so you're always magnifying the negative emotions that you're trying to avoid at the same time. And so being able to teach those skills and get people back to some sort of sense of self-confidence through first of all, being aware of an emotion, then being able to label that emotion and then being able to manage it in an effective and adaptive way is huge for people. And, you know, the feedback and whatever else, just the level of engagement for people, it was always very positive because now they were starting to give back some self-confidence.
Commissioners, the article that Dr Lane referred to is the E A Stanley and K L Larson article published in two thousand and nineteen and it's on page eighty-four of Dr Lane's statement. Now, just in terms of the emotions that are manifest in the dysregulated state, would you speak a little about those emotions?
When everyone who's ever had children or seen young children throwing a temper tantrum knows what dysregulated emotions are. Everyone that's seen a child that falls over and skins their knee and then, you know, wails and screams, it's because they, first of all, obviously lack those emotional regulation skills in the first place. But secondly, they don't necessarily have a context or a frame for what they're feeling. And then they can't communicate it very effectively either as well because it's unknown to them as well, too. And in a service context, there's only a few emotions that are culturally appropriate. And the first one of those is anger. And anger is one of those emotions that is primarily defensive because when we feel threatened, anger can help drive, you know, self-protective behaviors and those sorts of things. So if you think about someone who is ashamed of themselves, somewhat fragile and definitely unstable, anger is going to be a very common emotion that occurs, particularly when it's, you know, culturally appropriate because, you know, that's what you do in the military because anger helps, you know, if you say get mad, then you can go and do a whole bunch of things that you wouldn't do otherwise unless you had that intensity of emotion. But the problem with things like anger, and you're going to be talking to Professor Forbes next week as well about this, but anger is really important because it's often leads to impulsivity first and foremost and then disinhibition or disinhibited behavior. And so the impulsivity means that I'm, that's a good idea, I'm going to do this. Or I just jump in and don't even think about the consequences if I do that. That's the disinhibition part. And that unfortunately is, often leads people into then getting into further trouble. And so drinking too much, you know, episodes of road rage, then coming into contact, you know, with the police and various other organizations or just whatever. But that leads to then a pattern of anger and shame. And so you can see what we mean by the emotional ups and downs that are going on here and the constantly undermining of self-worth. And unfortunately, the more you then double down and beat up on yourself, the bigger those swings get. And eventually that has to lead to, you know, things like depression and certainly despair. And then suicide becomes a logical and rational consequence of that, doesn't it? Because if you weren't there, lots of other people would be a lot better off and you wouldn't have to deal with these things as well. And I'm sure you've heard a lot of that so far.
Now, the emotion of shame, do you want to speak a little bit more about that? And where it might proceed to?
Yeah. And again, we spend a lot of time dealing with this specifically in Gears and we did as well in STAIR. And again, because culturally, emotions aren't things that we want to experience and then after the transition process, you know, shame is something that occurs because of that loss of identity and loss of something to be proud of. And again, recognizing and dealing with this emotion then becomes really important, doesn't it? Because, you know, if we've had that really strong pride in ourselves because of the way we could work and we could do our jobs, that was also the way that we, you know, dealt with distress and tolerated aversive emotions in the first place. And so now when we don't have that job and that purpose, then it becomes a loss of a sense of meaning in life as well, too, doesn't it? Because if I don't have a job, I don't have a purpose. And if I don't have a purpose, what meaning does life have for me? And that again reinforces a negative sense of self, doesn't it? And so there's the shame. Because the opposite of shame is pride, as we, as we talk about in the program. And what do I have to be proud about if I have been the fish that John West rejected by being involuntarily discharged from service because I just wasn't good enough?
Yeah.
And then by the same token, you will have heard a lot about transition experiences and a lot of those, you know, are really quite adversarial. And in many ways, that transition is like a really bad marriage breakdown. Because transition from a service context isn't just, I've lost my job, it's first and foremost, I've lost my identity. And military identity is something that we'll talk about later, but it's fundamentally important and central to that person. And it happens and it... And it happens and it's deliberately inculcated into people during transition into service through recruit training and then it's reinforced again and again and again just during service life. But when we talk about transition out, we don't talk about identity and we don't, certainly don't talk about identity changes, do we? Because transition isn't just, I've lost my job, it's a transition of identity first and foremost. And then secondly, it's a transition of culture, because you've gone from a service culture to a civilian culture, but your identity is not as a civilian, is it? But if you're not military and you're not civilian, then who are you and what are you? And again, if that identity component there is as of a veteran, great. But what is positive about that veteran identity? Is it a broken identity in the sense that you have to prove you're broken and you have these disabilities and various other sorts of problems so you can access services and potential compensation and so on? And so what we're talking about here again is that, you know, process of, of developing some sort of sense of purpose and meaning in life and, you know, something to regain some control over yourself and your functioning so you can, you know, do things that are more functional in your life. And to bring that all back to the construct of emotional regulation, if you can't, as we say, get your shit in one sock, then you, you're not gonna be able to do any of those things, are you? And that again comes back to, how often do we talk about this in therapy, so to speak? And my, you know, primary sort of thesis is that these things are psychoeducation and skills-based things. And that probably is the best way to be able to put them. And putting it into the framework of the Modified Group Stare Programme, the MG Stare Programme, and to a, to a degree, but much more effectively in the Gears Programme that we're running through Mesher, that is what again attracts people to it because they intuitively understand it, because they have that lived service experience and can say to themselves, yeah, shit, you're right.
Dr. Lane, what was that expression you used to, it wasn't control oneself, it was some other word starting with C that I'd missed.
Sorry, I didn't hear that properly.
Controled oneself or?
Uh, if, if you can't contain yourself, sorry. And so if you think about, you know, a bucket and a bucket with water in it, for example, and so that's what, though, if, if the water is your emotions, but you're walking around and the, and the water bucket is, the water's slopping out of the bucket everywhere, then you're slopping on people. And that's often, you know, the way we describe it in the programme as well as that you are being emotionally sloppy. And again, you know, you will know people who have been like that and they're very difficult to bear around for any period of time because of that emotional sloppiness, they can't contain themselves. And again, you can see that that then drives people away from them, which reinforces the isolation, but it also reinforces the sense of shame and then the negative sense of self and so on and so on and so on.
Now, the, the relationship, as it were, between the notions that you speak here of, of emotional regulation and aspects of emotional dysregulation. And the condition of PTSD. And also in that context, the, the idea of a trans-diagnostic approach as distinct perhaps from a categorical approach. Would you mind elaborating on that territory a little bit?
And, and so again, I'm going to apologise because this is going to be a long answer because it has lots of different moving parts to it. But first and foremost, when we think about mental health, we, as a way of sort of, we have to have some way of categorising things to be able to say it is this, but it is not that. And the categorical model is what the diagnostic of, Diagnostic Manual of, um, Diagnostic and Statistic Manual of Psychiatric Disorders is the DSM. And it's also the same way that the I C D, the International Classification of Diseases Model works as well too. But there's a problem with this and that problem is that we're dealing with people. And you can't put, necessarily put someone into a box, into a category, because to put them into a box, we have to say for like PTSD, for example, you know, it has twenty primary symptoms on four sort of key areas. And the, the key areas for post-traumatic stress disorder are intrusion symptoms and so thoughts, intrusive memories, those sorts of things. Uh, avoidance behaviours or avoidance activities because of those, the distress from those intrusive thoughts. Arousal, which is the emotions being aroused, but it's also hypervigilance from that sense of threat. And then finally, it's about, you know, cognitive and behavioural and emotional changes in that person. And so we're talking about not just changes in terms of hypervigilance and awareness of threat and things like that, but we're talking about functional decline as well too. And so this is, this is nice and, you know, theoretically simple because we can say, you know, there's those five, you know, particular main categories and there's twenty symptoms and we can go tick, tick, tick. Well, there's hundreds and hundreds of different, um, you know, potential complications, sorry, potential co-diagnoses that you can have if you have those symptoms. And that's because there's a lot of things in common. And so the only thing that makes PTSD really stand out by itself is the fact that there is some sort of traumatic event and then there's the intrusive sort of thoughts and memories and that sort of stuff. And so when you think about it from that context, there's a huge amount of overlap with other psychiatric disorders. And it's not really a box, it's actually a whole bunch of nested boxes. And so, you know, a condition like anxiety, for example, has a whole bunch of similar symptoms. If you think about the, the process of being anxious for a while and being stressed, if you had PTSD, for example, then sooner or later you get exhausted and we call that depression and emotionally exhausted and having a low mood. And you can see if you've been through those swings and roundabouts for any period of time, well, it's not, not a surprise that you're going to be depressed as well. And then we talk about, you know, other problems or problematic things like anger and then shame as well, the emotion there too. And so we have to have some sort of a coping mechanism for that. And substance abuse and other things like gambling and so on and so on, they are very, very common disorders with PTSD because they make you feel better in the moment. They do lead to longer-term problems, obviously, but in the moment, when you're dysregulated, it's what people reach for. And so we don't just tend to see pure PTSD, we tend to see, you know, the, the quadrelle of PTSD plus anxiety, depression and/or substance abuse with problematic behaviour. And this then becomes a problem, doesn't it? Because if I say, you know, this is the treatment for PTSD, then we're locking someone into a particular diagnostic framework and all of our evaluations of treatment for PTSD have to, you know, um, align with that particular framework in terms of what they do include and what they don't include. Excuse me. From a clinical perspective, I, I've had problems with this because in clinical practice, people don't present as having, you know, fitting neat little boxes. I wish they did because life would be a lot easier, but they don't. And so that means we have to take what's called a trans-diagnostic approach. And just for a bit of context here, when we're talking about treatment for people in psychiatry, we have a model called the BioPsycho-Social Model. And so we look at biological components, psychological components and then psychosocial components of treatment. So the biological treatment for PTSD would generally include some sort of pharmacotherapy. But the problem with that is, is that we don't really have medications for PTSD. And so what we tend to do is use medications that help treat symptoms of PTSD such as arousal and anxiety and depression and so on like that. The psychological treatments are the trauma-focused psychotherapies and those are the ones that we have the most evidence for. But then what about the psychosocial interventions? And, you know, the psychosocial interventions are things like, you know, ex-service organisations provide, you know, so community-type activities, um, you could say men's sheds are another example of that, but even just, you know, social supports and various other things. And so when we think about a programme like Gears, we're talking about the psychosocial and psychological components. But there, you know, in terms of those trans-diagnostic nature of those things, again, it comes back to the point where if we're talking about a, um, a broad condition or a condition with a lot of comorbidities like PTSD, then we have to have a broad intervention initially so that we can get people stabilised first and foremost with some capacity for distress tolerance. And the important thing about a trans-diagnostic intervention in, in the first place is that once people have had some education, they can be aware of and then prioritise what they think their primary problems are and then go and get treatment for it. Unfortunately, the way that we operate in, in the medical, medical model that we have is that if someone has symptoms of PTSD, then they go to a psychologist or a psychiatrist. And so they come in at the very, very top or the pointy end, which is the most expensive and the most intensive in terms of resources, time and effort for that particular condition. And a- again, you know, my beliefs in these areas were driven by my clinical practice and by what I'd seen in terms of people improving. And so that was, was basically my thesis, that we should be starting with these sorts of psychoeducation and stabilisation programmes first in a trans-diagnostic sort of way, because that's how we would get people to be able to actually benefit from, from, you know, the evidence-based therapies afterwards.
The trauma and chronic stress. And it feeding, generating. Emotional dysregulation. Do you mind just elaborating on that a touch?
So Commissioners, one of the other problems that we don't necessarily appreciate very well is that people are dynamic and that when we think about things, we have to take a longitudinal perspective. And oftentimes what happens is that when you think about the whole stress and coping responses is that what I do today has an impact on me and how I am functioning later on, but tomorrow was well too. And most importantly, and this is what we, we, we tell people in the Gears Programme, what you practise is what you get good at doing. And so if we think about maladaptive coping behaviours and maladaptive responses to stress over time and the impact on yourself, on your own emotional regulation and on the relationships of, with people that, that, you know, are close to you, that has a compounding effect over time. And this is why it's important to be able to identify, you know, symptoms of PTSD early and then, you know, intervene early and most importantly, get people to engage early in order to be able to get back to some sort of sense of stability. Because the longer things go on for, the more out of whack and disturbed they get and the more the dysregulation, because it's been practised, you know, obviously improves and the bigger the swings get and the more and more dysfunctional and dysregulated someone is.
Now, we might turn to the Gears Programme itself. Operator, might you display stu dot triple zero one dot triple zero one dot seven three one nine? This is the participant manual, Commissioners. Operator, might you then go to dot seven three three O? This is on pages four and five. Operator, might you display the top half of the page, please? Dr. Lane, might you tell us in the first instance, how the Gears Programme differs from the Stare Programme?
So Commissioners, the Stare Programme was first developed by Professor Cloyde in two thousand and two and she was a child psychologist by profession at that time. And again, her, her bent was emotional dysregulation from adverse childhood events such as childhood sexual abuse and various other sorts of things. And so Professor Cloyde developed the Stare as being a bunch, or a bunch, a collection of, um, generic exercises or psychological tools. And these were a mix of cognitive behavioural therapy or C B T tools and dialectical behavioural therapy tools such as D B T. And this was because, you know, childhood trauma was often related with conditions or dysregulated person, uh, sorry, dysregulated, um, functioning conditions and particularly things like borderline personality disorder. And she'd used these exercises as a, as a little collection of, of activities and tools and it was then followed by narrative exposure therapy. So the Stare Programme was an individual thing, one-on-one, and it was then followed by individual, uh, trauma-focused psychotherapy. Professor Cloyde joined the Veterans Affairs Services after nine eleven and then started working particularly with, with female veterans who'd had military sexual trauma or, you know, prior adverse trauma before joining the military. And I was, it was, it was quite coincidental but very lucky that when I had visited them in September of two thousand and fifteen, that they'd just, um, produced a, a group Stare manual. And so Professor Cloyde said, take this and run with it and have fun. And I did. And then unfortunately, I went back to the US in two thousand and nineteen and caught up with Professor Cloyde talking about the results that I'd had because I was really quite surprised by the effectiveness of the intervention and the way that we'd modified it to make it more culturally specific. And I'd actually communicated with her, um, by email to make sure it was okay for me to change that and put the, sort of the cultural content around it, but also in particular to have it delivered by peers, people lived experience who weren't clinicians. And unfortunately, she, uh, told me then that they were licensing the programme and it could only be delivered by clinicians. And this was a bit of a, um, a shock at first, but then I thought, well, okay, if I can't use that, then I have to write something else. And then that then became the motivation to put all these things about identity and culture and some other bits and pieces that I thought were missing into the Gears Programme. And so superficially, the structure is somewhat similar, but the content, you know, has some of those psychological exercises and tools. But, uh, the Stare Programme didn't have an overall theoretical basis for, for everything to sort of hang together. And so I used an acceptance and commitment therapy or A C T model for this because one of the primary components of that is, is values. And values are very important in, in terms of a service context because values are, you can define values in terms of attitudes towards something, beliefs about how something should be and then behaviours as well. And so those attitudes, beliefs and behaviours allowed us to sort of use the service, um, and cultural construct, but then also to use that as sort of a tool for people to become more functional and to start moving forward. And so the structure of Gears, the first half of the programme is about, um, emotional regulation. And then you can see from the, the headings there, um, cognitive interventions in session three, behavioural interventions, and then week five, the routine structure and environmental interventions. And this, um, routine structure and environmental stuff is really important as well because it's helping people understand that when they're disorganised as a person, that has an impact on them emotionally. And an example we use there is, you know, not paying bills, not opening mail, you know, having a cluttered house and various other sorts of things like that, because those are all sources of stress and therefore distress that are entirely outside of trauma. But that sort of personal disorganisation is often a function or a complication of or a consequence of trauma as well too. Week six is probably one of the most important weeks in the session and this is about the whole culture, identity and transition process. And this is when we talk or step people through that process that I've described first about, you know, forming an identity, understanding culture and in particular, the impact of, of social groupings on culture and identity. And helping people understand the transition process into service as well as the transition out of service and as well in the context of other transitions in life, such as leaving school, joining the workforce, getting married, having kids and so on and so on and so on to normalise those sorts of processes. Kevin, would you mind putting the next one up or do you have other questions?
Operator, might you display the next page, please? We're, we're moving now to, um, week seven to twelve in the process. And this was a new element, uh, of, and Operator, might you display the next, uh, the top half of the page, please? And this was another aspect in which the Gears Programme differed from the the um Stair Programme. And tell us a little bit about, at the highest level to start with, what this involves.
So if the first half of the programme was about themselves or them as individuals and in particular focusing on all of those sorts of things that, you know, impact and give them, um make them feel distressed. And again, as I said, most of that wasn't in the Stair Programme. And in the second half of the programme, the way we introduce it is me plus you actually equals us. And so one plus one now equals three. And this is defining, again in language that people can relate to and understand, that when you have relationships with other people, first of all, you need them. But then secondly, there are things that you have to consider about them and about the relationship, so it becomes more complex now. And this includes things like understanding identity, understanding needs, as in Maslow's hierarchy of needs and wants. So this is what I need and what I do need isn't just, you know, physical safety and shelter, but it's actually emotional validation as well. And then going further up the chain, it's actually, I need to feel good about myself and I need to have that reflected back to me by people in my life, otherwise I can't be happy either, can I? And so the relationship stuff um i- is about those sorts of fundamental things that I think when I was putting all of this sort of stuff together and as was reflected by a lot of participants regularly, it was just stuff like, why didn't we get told this or we should be taught this in school or whatever else? Because these are just basic, you know, skills and lessons for being a functioning human being and a functional, a good person, in other words. What was very different though was weeks ten and eleven, and we bring partners into the into the programme. Then we encourage participants to go through the workbooks because each chapter is at least thirty pages so that they can bring their partners with them along the journey of what they're learning and and the content. But in week ten, we talk about conflict and using um good communication skills and depersonalising things for healthy conflict resolution. And then in in session eleven, we talk about developing intimacy. And again, through um, you know, skills and activities and various other things like that. But it was really important to have partners in the room with the individuals because partners do the majority of the heavy lifting in terms of functioning and recovery for veterans and first responders. And without having good, solid um supports, you know, the trajectory of recovery is generally really quite poor. And certainly when you think about having good relationships with people and good supporting relationships, those are your primary protective factors against outcomes like suicide. But again, it was really important to have the partners there because all the theoretical knowledge in the world is great if it, but not if it's not actually applied in practice. And so having partners allowed that to sort of happen together. And then session twelve is just a summary and, you know, recognition and acknowledgement of where they've come and then how they're going forward.
Operator, might you display um page thirty-seven of the same document, please? This, Dr Lane, is the feelings wheel. We won't spend too much time on it, but just a minute or two, if you could explain the salience of this. It's at dot seven three six three, Operator. Just whilst whilst we're waiting for that, um Operator, I'll reread that. stu dot triple zero one dot triple zero one dot seven three one nine is the first page. And it's at dot seven three six three. Thank you, Operator. Might you spend a moment or two on what this is about?
Commissioners, you've you've had a bit of a brief look at the manual, so you've seen that it's very practical in nature. And again, this is no different from that either. And the feelings wheel is a very useful tool, it's been around for quite some time. But it's very handy because it's like a paint colour chart and you can talk about opposites and you can talk about degrees of sort of um specificity in terms of the emotions that people are feeling by going from the inside to the outside. And you can see that as you start off on the inside, they're big emotions, but those big ones are quite general. And so what we're talking about here is how people then be, you know, get more specific about what they're actually feeling. And this is an essential component of chapter two, which is or the second session, which is about understanding emotions. And part of the homework tasks for this, for example, is to pull out some of those words and go, you know, what does helpless feel like to me? Instead of, you know, I'm just feeling fearful or anxious or sad, what does helpless feel like and what does it mean to me? And again, you can see that we're talking about very practical, very concrete activities here. But that functional content is what people want primarily. And again, you don't need to be a clinician to be able to teach that to people.
Now, just the um, the way that the Gears Programme, as designed by you, is carried out and the involvement of peer facilitators. Might you just speak a little bit about how you, how that's being done and the significance of of peers in in the process?
Commissioners, I'm sure you've heard a fair bit about lived experience and the use of peers in various programmes and those sorts of things. Um, you know, in the evidence that's been presented so far. And I feel particularly when we talk about military and first responders that the culture is fundamental. And so that lived experience is of the culture and therefore the cultural expertise. But then it's also in terms of the lived experience of mental health conditions as well too. And there's a huge, um, I suppose, importance of this when we start thinking about how our medical models work and how our medical models work in regional areas as well too. Because again, if we don't have clinicians, then who who does the treatment? Where does someone get an intervention from? And the answer is, well, they don't, do they? Because we don't have the clinicians. And so access and engagement with services becomes really difficult if those services don't exist. We also need to actually recognise here that there's an acuity of need. But there's also, you know, a range of um intensity of care that gets given. And that intensity obviously relates to complexity as well. And so, you know, we've heard the other day that, you know, there are inpatient facilities in every other state except for Darwin. And Darwin and Tasmania are in the same boat where we don't have inpatient programmes and we don't have outpatient programmes. We don't even have dedicated beds for for veterans and first responders. And so this was why, again, I was talking about those sorts of generalised skills-based interventions that could be delivered. But when we talk about service culture and in particular, culture and lack of cultural knowledge being a barrier to engagement, the logical argument there is that the best person to do that is the person that's been there, done that and lived it because they have that cultural expertise. And again, when we're talking about sort of um, you know, provision of services, do we need someone that has my years and years of university and my level of expertise to be teaching these things? Well, yes, in the sense that I have the cultural expertise, but very much no in the sense that when we have, you know, a manual which lays all these sorts of things out, we can use people with lived experience to be able to do this instead of clinicians. And that has multiple different benefits. The first and foremost is that, you know, when we think about academic research that I talked about earlier, it's always research that's done about the veteran and first responder population. And, you know, that was one of the biggest challenges that I think we heard about the other day with Professor Milroy. And we're talking about how um culture and cultural specificity is incorporated into the research research that's done about a group of people. And we'd say the same thing about the clinical interventions too. Because it's all about things that are done to people rather than things that are done with people. And so when we start talking about peers and lived experience, we're talking about the group of people who have the problems actually being given, you know, responsibility and a scope of practice for an intervention in a really specific way that actually helps them and helps the members of their community. And I I wrote the programme specifically so that it could be delivered in the community, outside of hospitals, outside of clinics. And when you think about organisations like ex-service organisations and in particular Mecca or Military and Emergency Services Health Australia, we're talking about a community-based organisation that can train someone up to deliver this programme for the benefit of the people in their community. Doesn't rely on having, you know, great hospitals because we don't have them here in terms of those sorts of things for veterans. But it does actually rely on having people in the community who want to help other people in their community as a result of what they've been through. And that's what we talk about when we're talking about the veteran population and some sort of sense of purpose and meaning and the ability to actually do, you know, that as a part of your recovery. To be able to go from patient to peer and then to become a peer expert or something similar so that you can give back to members of your community. And again, doesn't rely on bricks and mortar and doesn't rely on a huge amount of clinical expertise. But most importantly, it's from someone from that community who's been there, done that. And then role models, what functional recovery looks like. And what we've found is that the outcomes are actually significantly better than what we expected. And I think that's primarily because those lived experience people have the credibility. And so when you have the credibility, funnily enough, people listen to you and they engage in it. And so the uptake of skills and the practice of skills was significantly better than what we thought it would be because we weren't having someone talk at them, we were having someone say, been there, done that, this is what you've got to do.
Commissioners heard on Monday from Professor, sorry, on Tuesday from Professor Milroy. And Professor Milroy spoke about cultural competence.
Hmm.
Did we, did you hear that?
Yes, I was listening to it, yes.
And what were your thoughts about that in the military context?
So if culture and cultural expertise is something that's been recognised for quite some time. And in fact, when the fifth edition of the DSM was brought out in two thousand and fifteen, sorry, two thousand and thirteen, that's the first time we had a cultural specifier included in how we assess, you know, what 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 someone has and how we should actually manage them. Unfortunately, oh, sorry, and so culture and and cultural expertise is often talked about in terms of ethnic groups, racial groups. And Professor Milroy's things were exactly what we're talking about when we're talking about First Nations interventions. But oftentimes, we don't give military and first responders a label of culture and cultural specificity. And I argue that that is actually, you know, very problematic. And a lot of the literature in the US talks about culture and how you deal with people from the services differently because they have their own specific culture. And so I wrote this paper on on culture for clinicians with Dr Duncan Wallace, who is the head of, he's the psychiatrist for the ADF Centre for Mental Health. And, you know, um, Dr Wallace has, I think, nearly four decades of service in the Navy and which is incredibly impressive. And again, has has a background, um, you know, somewhat similar to mine, but again, more seniority, more experience and these sorts of things. And it was this conversation that we'd had a few times about, again, going back to when clinicians don't get what someone is presenting with, is that the fault of the clinician or is it the fault of the patient because they can't describe it? And I would argue that we need to educate people and inform people about what makes, you know, military and veterans different from the average civilian. And in when we're talking about culture, we can define cultural competency as understanding, first of all, the common experiences that someone might undergo. But also if we define culture, we we can talk about a group of people who have similar experiences, similar language, which is different from from mainstream language. Generally, there's some sort of a hierarchy, there's similarities in terms of like dress. And so for us, we're talking in uniform. But then you're also talking very much about shared values. And that goes back to the reason for that being incorporated, you know, within the um, in the Gears Programme. But understanding someone from from that service background means that you need to be aware of those sorts of things. You know, you need to be able to be aware of some common rank terms, you need to be aware of the common um situations and things that people experience. And even what that means. So if I said recruit training, then to me, that means three months at Kapuka. And it means a massive change in in my life and my personal identity and where I'm going and what I'm doing. But it's only two words. And if you haven't been through that experience, it's very difficult to relate to it. And the way we talk about that is, you know, becoming a parent, for example. Because again, becoming a parent is literally two words and a letter. But how much does that change your life? And we're talking here about being able to use that language and to be able to communicate that shared experience with people. And again, this is why we're talking about the cultural context for everything within service, but also cultural conditioning. Because when you've been in that culture, your behaviour and your attitudes, your beliefs, your values are very much shaped by the people that you're you're with and you interact with. And when you're in a military environment, you ninety-nine point nine percent of the time only associate with military people. And then when your lifestyle involves, you know, changing locations every couple of years on postings, that it removes you even more from, you know, wider sort of civilian society. And so again, you know, being shaped by the values of the people that you're with means that you expect those sorts of things from other people. And so what happens when you leave service is that you then get insulted and angry by other people's behaviour because you don't think it's appropriate. But that's based on you and your experiences, not on them and what they see as appropriate because of their culture. And so again, that's a long-winded way of saying that as clinicians, we need to be aware of those specificities when we're dealing with this group of people. Same as we do for First Nations people, for refugees, for migrants, you know, people of other genders and and sexual orientations and all of those sorts of things. And I'm not saying we're special snowflakes, but I am saying we have specific and unique needs that need to be met. Otherwise, there's barriers to access and engagement with services. And if people can't access or engage with services, they're not going to improve.
In the peer delivery of under the Gears Programme, what does good peer delivery actually look like? And how do you ensure that it happens?
So one of my, I suppose, biggest concerns with the whole lived experience peer move into the clinical space, I suppose, uh, was role specificity and then potential, so potential damage to the peers themselves and potential damage that peers could do because they were not clinicians in the first place. And so a big part of of the thesis was actually not just, you know, developing, but also evaluating how we could identify appropriate people, select them, then train them up and then supervise their operation with an appropriate scope of responsibilities to actually do a particular job. And, you know, in my mind, this was no different, I suppose, to what all of us want. And we want a job that actually has a really clearly defined role and it has responsibilities attached to that role so that we know what we're doing and what we need to do versus what we don't need to do. And unfortunately, in in the peer space, there are often, there is often, you know, that's lacking in a, in a, in a polite way. And this leads to problems because there's significant amount of overreach, particularly in the veteran space. Because veterans, obviously, that's a really strong sense of, you know, social identity. And it, and, you know, I don't do the things I do. I mean, I I dropped the vast majority of my paid income so I could do my PhD, you know, five years ago. And it's taken me a long while to get back, it's taken me a long while to finish the PhD because I've had to go back to work to earn money so I can actually prove that these things work. And so that's an example of what veterans do for, you know, our community, that's how it works. But that can be really, really dangerous for peers, can't it? Because you're putting someone with a history of vulnerability because they have injuries into a position where they're supposed to help their mates or support into a position where they're supposed to help their mates or support them. And Commissioners, that to me becomes problematic because what does help look like? What does support look like? I mean, it's such, you know, they can be such general terms. And so people will often run themselves into the ground and break themselves trying to do everything they can for that other person because they feel responsible for them. And that obviously isn't going to work well on the longer term. And you're going to be causing more harm and more damage, not just to the peer, but to the people that they're working with. And so i- in my mind, that meant we had to come back and go, are these people clinicians first and foremost? Well, no, they're not. And this is why we're taking an educational and supportive role in the sense that our, you know, veterans and first responders who become peer facilitators have to do a diploma in counselling so that we have some level of general background competence in acute crisis counselling. But their primary role is actually education and facilitation of the program itself. And so it's that combination of having some mental health knowledge. It's got practical experience in the program because they have to do a program before they can nominate to then observe more to learn the content so that they can deliver the content with someone else. Because having two peer facilitators means they keep each other on track and they keep each other in check. And if, excuse me, if someone has a problem in the program, there's always one person who can take them aside and deal with their immediate problems while the other facilitator gets on with the rest of the group. But then that then requires sort of supervision over time as well. Because this is about maintaining, um, first of all competencies, but secondly, the standard of, um, the content that's actually being delivered as well. And then again, ensuring people aren't overreaching. And what we're doing here is we're maximizing those veterans' desire to help other people. But we're also maximizing the content in what's delivered. Because again, it's skills and it's education. It's not therapy and it's not treatment. But because it's been delivered by someone who's been there and can talk comfortably using the appropriate language, giving specific circumstances and, you know, situations that people are familiar with, it actually gets listened to. And then people practice those things and again, they improve.
You give this the label of interventions rather than treatment, is that?
Yeah. And so when we think about treatment, Commissioners, we think about, you know, some sort of medicine or something like that. And again, I would put this program as an adjunctive intervention. As in, it's something that's done, which is an adjunct to mainstream treatment. Because again, treatment is delivered by clinicians for a specific purpose to make someone better. And this is a, you know, psychoeducation and skills-building exercise or intervention to help people understand and become aware of themselves, most specifically in terms of emotions, emotional regulation, and then supportive relationships.
Now, um, might you just speak for a moment or two on the impact of, of not being culturally understood for veterans and defence members?
Yeah.
Perhaps of, of not being recognized.
Hmm. There, there's, there's a number of parts to that. And, you know, again, my experience when I tried to get help was again, I couldn't explain what had happened to me. Because how do you explain all of the small things and all the detail? Because you have to explain everything so much to the point that you lose what you're actually talking about. And that's a major reason for disengagement from treatment or avoidance of future treatment. And, you know, the, the statistics that were in the Transition and Wellbeing Research Program from two thousand and eighteen, uh, the Pathways to Care Programme in particular, sort of suggested that three in four veterans who'd sought help had, had dropped out. So they had, had not gone back to see someone. Excuse me. And if we think about a population that has at least fifty percent of people with a serious mental illness at the start, if three quarters of that population then stop engaging with someone, we've only got, you know, what, about twelve? Less than fifteen percent of the population continuing to engage over time. And it's almost impossible to give every clinician that cultural competence. But what we can do, at least within the community basis, is give them an intervention which makes them more functional so that they can then hopefully, um, talk to and engage with clinicians who don't have that cultural expertise better. Because a big part of the whole program, we talked before about being an adjunct intervention, is that this is something that's in addition to good treatment from clinicians. It doesn't replace treatment for the vast majority of people. But again, by getting people to engage in this way, we could give them the knowledge and skills to be able to talk to clinicians so that they can actually get the appropriate help that they need and overcome those cultural barriers because they've actually got the knowledge to talk about what's going on with them.
In listening to Professor Milroy's, um, evidence the other day, um, you would have heard Commissioner Brown and Professor Milroy speaking about the wellbeing of the care providers or the, the, the peer facilitators themselves.
Hmm.
Could you just speak a little bit about how that's best achieved?
So Commissioners, I, I talked briefly about the selection process. And I didn't really describe the selection criteria that we used. But one of the primary things is people, people have to have some degree of emotional awareness in the first place. And that's, you know, in popular literature, it's, it's called emotional intelligence. And so it's those, and then, you know, they have to be doing things for what's perceived to be the right reason. So not for ego reasons, but because they want to give back. They have to have the capacity to do that diploma in counselling. So they have to have, you know, reasonable um, writing and reading skills. But then they also actually have to have themselves together enough to actually be able to control a group to deliver a program as well. So the teaching and education components as well too. But you can also see that we care. I mean, identified the biggest risks to using peers in the first place. And that's why you need to have that wraparound service in terms of supervision and in terms of regular support. And then ongoing, you know, education and professional development for those groups as well too. I've, uh, written a paper as a part of my thesis called Peers as Paraprofessionals. And I talked about this, I was actually invited to present on this topic at the Australian Conference on Traumatic Stress last year. And again, this is talking from a service perspective about how we can take peers and treat them as paraprofessionals. And from this perspective, I'm saying that they don't have the degree of knowledge, education, training and experience that I have as a professional. But they do fit very neatly into that para-professional role. So they have a limited scope of responsibilities because they have a specific task or a specific job. But within that narrower scope, they become professionals. Because they are, they have the lived expertise. Because they've gone from patient to peer to now modeling and integrating what recovery actually is for them. And so using them as paraprofessionals, again, augments, you know, services that can be provided not just by community organizations, but by clinical organizations. Or, I mean, we're, you know, we're doing this with, um, South Australian Metro Fire Services. Our Department of Police Foreign Emergency Management here is doing the same sorts of things as well too. Because again, we're saying to an organization, you can take that person because they have your cultural expertise. We can train them up, we can use this manualized intervention with appropriate supervision. And they can deliver that as a part of their, their responsibilities with work. And then that organization has an immediate intervention that they can use beyond just mental health first aid. Or, you know, the peer support thing where you ring your mate or ring someone after an event and ask how they're going. And when they say, I'm not going well, then the, you know, the, the peer support worker goes, oh shit, now what do I do? You need to go see someone about that. Well, who?
Operator, might you display exp dot triple zero six dot double zero eleven dot O two eight three? And operator, might you go to dot zero two nine six within that document? Commissioners, this is a set of slides that, um, Dr Lane prepared for another presentation. And we won't go into the quantitative, um, details of your Gears study and your PhD. But we might have a glance very quickly at the qualitative results. I'll repeat the reference, operator, if it assists.
Ah, there we go.
Thank you, operator.
So Commissioners, the modifications that I made to the group's DARE program were not just the content, but also the structural factor as well too. And these were primarily around cultural specificity. And the group format was incredibly important. And the reason it was so important was because the primary problems of PTSD include, include things like social withdrawal and isolation. But secondly, feeling abnormal because of their trauma and their traumatic experiences. And therefore, that reinforces, you know, withdrawal and isolation. But it reinforces that negative sense of self as well too. When you put people in a group, one of the most important things is that it challenges that withdrawal. And it, you know, reminds people that they can, you know, what they've experienced was normal. And that normalization of, of experiences is so fundamentally important. Because when you're one-on-one with a patient in a room, they don't have anyone else to compare their experiences to. And I can say to someone, mate, you're doing really well. And they go, well, it doesn't seem like it to me. Because they don't have my experience of seeing a whole bunch of other people in, in similar situations. But when you put people together, they can normalize those things. Because they've had that shared common experience of mental health problems as well as of service problems. And so what happens then is typically in a, in a group dynamic, you've, you've heard of the process of storming, norming and performing. And so the storming and norming stuff happens in the first half an hour. Because culturally, again, service experience is about going into group training. Because group training is what happens all the time for everyone. And that group training is led by senior soldiers or officers or whatever, but senior people. And in this sense, the peers, the peer facilitators take that senior role. And they deliver that, that training. Because the program itself is not about pathologizing someone with PTSD. It's about saying, no, these are the things that you're going to do to help you function better. And so by removing that sort of negative, um, you know, pathologizing PTSD construct from the room, people can then go, cool, let's get on with it. And again, that reinforces and normalizes appropriate uptake of the skills, but also use of them. Because again, every week at the start of the program, go through the homework, what's happened during the week and all those sorts of things. And so by people being able to see those common problems, see the common reactions, normalize them and see how doing different things, doing things differently gives them a different outcome and then they improve, that sort of maximizes the whole thing here as well too. And so I don't think you could get that in a one-on-one environment. And I certainly don't think you could get that if you didn't have, you know, people from the same service backgrounds doing it.
Operator, might you display the next page, please? I'd like to give the Commissioners some time. Sorry, it's dot O two nine seven.
Yep.
Thank you, operator.
So Commissioners, this goes back to a lot of what we talked about before, but the importance of that cultural specificity through the use of the lived experience. And again, it's all the stuff I talked about. But some of those bubbles, the thought bubbles on the right-hand side, including trust and respect, familiarity, relatability, rapport, increased participation and so on. And what we're talking about here is how the content, so the language and the examples and the situations within the manual itself. And then because that was delivered by the peers with the lived experience, they were modeling, you know, their lived expertise. And these are the sorts of things that the participants said that they really, really liked about it. And again, there was, uh, participants, I mean, people who were, ended up as peer facilitators had to do the program as a participant first. And so these people were volunteering their time to be able to do all of this training and then deliver the, the programs. We weren't paying them because we're not getting paid for delivering the program up until, well, we're still working that out. But, you know, people don't put themselves out to that degree if they don't believe in something. And when you look at the veteran population, I'd think they're relatively good at smelling, you know, um, a fish that's going off or similar things like that. And so they can smell it a mile away. But again, people believed in this and then put themselves out there in their time and whatever else enough to be able to keep on doing it and help it grow. And it's because of all of these things that were there. Yeah, I just can't think of any other way to say it.
This slide captures the salient features of cultural competence?
Absolutely. And through the use of peers, yes.
Operator, might you display the, the next page, please? Dot zero two nine eight. Might you speak to this slide for a moment or two?
And so Commissioners, this is, instead of the structural stuff in terms of cultural specificity through group and lived experience, we're just talking about the functional and recovery-oriented content. And again, this goes back to what I was talking about, not pathologizing someone by means of a diagnosis. But literally by saying you are struggling to function because of these reasons. And what we're doing here is training you or giving you the education to understand the understanding of how and why something occurred in the first place, but then what you can do to change that. And again, this, the, the stuff in italics there is just direct quotes from participants. It was basically very, very, very popular.
Commissioners, I have many further questions I could ask, but um, I invite the Commissioners to ask any questions that they so wish.
Thank you, Mr Connor. Commissioner, Commissioner Brown?
Um, thank you, Dr Lane. It's very, very interesting and just makes so much sense. I have a number of questions, um, and just, Mr Connor caught me somewhat unprepared because I wasn't expecting to finish quite so early. Can I just ask you, one of the issues, um, that I'm interested in, we've heard, um, in previous roundtables and and private sessions and hearings, et cetera, about the issue of polypharmacy that veterans and their families often tell us about. And, and my sense of that is that it is practitioners trying to treat some of the emotional dysregulation.
Yes.
Uh, I just wondered whether you wanted to offer a comment and tell me whether the, whether your study looked at the impact on need for medications?
So two separate points there. And, and Commissioner, your first point about polypharmacy is absolutely correct. And I understand you've heard from Dr Koo about various things like that. The problem we have is that people present to their doctors, whether that's a GP or a psychiatrist, with overwhelming levels of distress. And I can't cope and doc, you have to help me, you have to do something. And so as doctors, we prescribe medications. And so what happens is we prescribe medications to help reduce levels of distress. But in, in PTSD, we don't have a medication that cures that PTSD. All we have is, is medications that help reduce distress. And so what you're doing there is you're medicating symptoms. And effectively, you know, that's like, you know, cutting yourself and, and having a, a, you know, massive bleeding injury or wound or something like that and then taking Panadol because it hurts. You haven't done anything about the wound, but you're taking Panadol because it hurts. And this is the problem, isn't it? Because if we talk about emotional, you know, regulation as being the thing that, that underlies, you know, anxiety, depression, PTSD and various other sorts of disorders and functioning, if we don't teach people to tolerate distress and to manage distress and therefore manage their own symptoms, then where do we go from there? And unfortunately, you know, we have a system where we don't necessarily prioritize these sorts of things. And where the treatments that we have don't necessarily prioritize these things either. It's something that is assumed to happen over time with treatment. But it's not necessarily specified. but it's not necessarily specified. And so what happens is you have someone who gets more and more distressed despite more and more medication. Because every time they get a new medication, because they're not, you know, managing their symptoms or their distress or dysregulation, they overcome it. And so you can have people, and I spend a lot of time taking people off medications, because it's incredibly unhealthy, because we're treating a symptom, not the actual problem itself.
So I realise that you're just about to wind up with PhD submitted and I guess in a sense the validation of the G.I.S. programme as an evidence based intervention. I'm wondering what you see as the potential future for the G.I.S. programme? Because this enormous need.
Yeah.
And I'm just kind of wondering, yeah, what you see? How could it be rolled out at, you know, a much larger scale than the one programme you've been running?
I think the scalability of the programme was one of the key things that I was looking for in the first place. Because again, you know, I came from the perspective of someone sitting in my office by myself with just a parade of people marching through the door. And, you know, I work in conjunction with some other clinicians and psychologists, but we don't work out of the same building. I don't ever get to see them. I send them emails and messages and that sort of stuff and we pass patients between each other. There's no hospital for me to send people to and whatever else. And so that's where I've come from in terms of building community capacity and having something that can be replicated and scaled up. And ideally, I would see, you know, organisations like Open Arms being able to deliver a programme like this. Because their peer workers would then have something that's concrete and practical that they could deliver within an organisation that already has clinicians that can supervise them. Because a big requirement of this is to have clinicians that will be able to supervise these peer workers in terms of what they're doing. And you need that for obviously safety, but that's the primary reason. But also so that people who've done the programme have somewhere to go after the programme when they need it. And that's one of those gaps that is sort of lacking at the moment. We need, we don't have programmes in the community. And we need programmes in the community which could be done by ex-service organisations with clinical connections, but also with groups like Open Arms that would then be able to feed people to, you know, further services. Obviously, the larger centres like the Jamie Larkham Centre, like the Trauma Recovery Service programmes in Melbourne, Tuong Hospital that Dr Koo works for, they have the capacity to be able to do the individual treatment. But they would actually benefit from having these sorts of connections with community groups as well too. And Commissioners, my biggest problem has always been in a regional area, there's so many silos. And there's so many gaps that people fall through because we don't have, you know, the connections, let alone the clinicians with the expertise to be able to coordinate through services. And unfortunately, I think a lot of what you've seen and heard has related to the fact that where does someone go? And then what level of care do they get or intervention or treatment do they get when they actually are there? And at least we can't fix everything, but, you know, again, driven by the fact that this is, at least we could do this so that people could be more functional. Even if they still have PTSD and they still have symptoms, that's not an issue. And I actually can't say this enough. You can have symptoms, but as I say to everyone, it's mind over matter. If you don't mind, it doesn't matter. And if you're functional, it doesn't need to matter, does it? You can still be somewhat hypervigilant, you can still do other things because you can function. And you have people around you, so life is worth living. If we can do that at least, that's a huge start.
Can I ask you then, have you, and it may be too early, but have you had any discussions with DVA about the potential for them to support veterans in attending a programme like G.I.S.?
There has been potential, or there has been some discussions about some potential engagement, but nothing firm yet. And, you know, this is sort of not surprising because DVA is a very large bureaucracy. And one of the biggest problems, I think you will have heard from people as well too, is navigating the different parts of that bureaucracy in terms of who can provide what and what regulations they're operating under to be able to provide something. And at this particular point in time, there isn't the capacity for us to do that. But we'd love to be able to do that down the track in the future, yeah.
Can I ask you another question? I mean, one of the issues that you described in terms of, I guess, the genesis of the emotional dysregulation in the military is the need to squash the emotions, to be able to put the mission first, get on with the job and just push through any distress, but obviously most desirably quash it down. So there is no distress. But for many people, those who develop, you know, symptoms, there just comes a point where that just doesn't work any longer.
Yep.
Whatever it is, the filing cabinet, the box is full and it starts to, as you say, splotch over. One of the questions I guess I have is, is it possible to be a military member and manage your emotions in that role, but still actually have a part of your life where you can acknowledge and respond appropriately to the emotions? And I'm, you know, it might be at work or at home or it might be a cycle at work where you have to be functioning in that way. But then you have a time where you've given time to actually decompress.
So, Dr Brown, I think you're absolutely spot on the money. And what you're describing there is the gold standard of functioning, isn't it? And, you know, when we think about service members, we're talking about people who are already relatively highly functional before they start work. And so they have a resilience capacity which is over and above the rest of the civilian community. And again, I'm talking about this in terms of military and first responders because again, they're the same. And, you know, if you think about training and how you train a large group of people over a long period of time to the same standard over that period of time, you want people that don't think about things very much, particularly when you're talking about the basic soldier level. And so that's how we start. But unfortunately, a lot of people don't necessarily get past that stage. And what you are describing is what we're talking about in terms of developing appropriate coping skills. But you have to have that awareness first and foremost, backed up by some resilience. And by resilience, I mean you've been pushed, but you haven't been broken. If you have been pushed and you have been broken, then recovery is what we're talking about there instead of resilience or just bouncing back. But again, like we tell people in the programme, this emotional understanding and regulation work is, it requires mental discipline. And it requires the capacity to focus and work on something. And that's the same as what you'd do if you were doing a physical workout or some sort of physical training or something like that. It requires effort, it's not comfortable, but you get results when you keep on doing that. And so we ideally would have people who work at the peak of, you know, their skills and capacity, who have that capacity to be able to understand those emotions, have effective coping mechanisms to deal with them appropriately and adaptively at the time, and then be able to keep on functioning. But that would require, you know, some cultural change within defence for a start. And I think it would also require, first and foremost, people to actually be willing to engage and go through that process. And the reason I say that is because a lot of the time people ask, well, everyone should do a programme like G.I.S. or some other sort of transdiagnostic emotional regulation programme. And I would like to say that that sounds lovely in theory, but in practice, people have to realise that they need something before they engage with it. And it's that old cliche about how many psychiatrists it takes to change a light bulb. You know, and the joke is that the light bulb's got to want to change first. And again, I say this to everyone as well too. Because if people don't believe they need something, then the first thing they do is ignore it. And, yeah, and so I would say that we have to push people. They have to have some degree of damage in order to be able to understand that this is what they actually need. But then that package, that product has to maximize in good marketing way, has to maximize people's ability to engage with it and then use it.
Accepting everything you said, I was going to ask you what the ADF could do to better support people to develop those skills and capacity. But to some extent with what you've just said, I mean, the one thing that you do in the military is you do what you're told.
Well, that's a problem. And that's the best guaranteed way to kill a good idea is to make everyone do it. Because, you know, mandatory fun is not necessarily fun, is it? And, I mean, ideally, we'd be talking about this programme once people are in that transitioning stage from defence. And I would say close to transition or within 12 months of transition. Because there's a lot of competing demands on people's plate when they are transitioning. You know, there's moves, there's finances, there's getting medical stuff sorted, there's getting DVA stuff sorted. And the last thing they want to do is go and get told by Defence they have to go and do this programme as well. But if we were to do a programme like this, you know, between three to six months or even nine months after transition, they would have done, you know, the logistics and the administrative sort of stuff involved with transition and separation. And they would be starting to get into that identity change part of transition. And that would then, when they start to hear this sort of stuff, would just go, oh, right, yep, I get it now. Whereas before their brains would be too busy and too occupied with too many other things.
Can I ask you though, because so many people that we've seen and heard from are experiencing distress.
Yes.
And PTSD etcetera, want to continue with their career, but they just can't manage it. So is there scope for this while people are serving?
And absolutely in service, yes. And in fact, we ran the Modified STAIR Programme with the wounded and the wounded soldier, so the Soldier Recovery Centre in Adelaide. And this was actually really quite effective. And we had, you know, good feedback and we had people coming back into service because of what we were doing there. But I think the most important thing is, is that when you run a mixed group. And so we had, you know, military only, so people from the Soldier Recovery Centre only in a group. And it wasn't anywhere near as popular as it was when we took the people out of the service, out of the defence, the military environment and put them in with a whole group of people who'd been out for ages or who were coppers or other sorts of people as well. Because that helped them sort of understand that this is what they actually did need. And it took them out of that narrow minded sort of military, you know, construct or context that they were in, in the Soldier Recovery Centre. So yes, absolutely.
Okay, one last question and I'll stop. You talked about being the first military psychiatry essentially since the Vietnam era, when you served in Afghanistan in that role. I'm just curious as to why it is that there aren't, there wasn't that role of military psychiatry? Is it because there wasn't perceived need or is it because there's not?
Primarily, yes.
People to actually fill the vacancies?
No, primarily, obviously, there's always a shortage of psychiatrists, unfortunately. And I think Joint Health Command had decided in the late eighties and early nineties that they didn't need psychiatrists in uniform because Army Corps of Psychology could provide what was needed on the ground. And people could be referred externally to, you know, civilian providers for all of those other sorts of needs. And again, I think that was a massive problem. And I think we're paying for that now because we don't have that, you know, cultural expertise, because we don't have anyone that's served in the military. We don't have, you know, facilities here as an inpatient facility. So how do people even get exposure to treating veterans? You know, they don't because we don't have the facilities.
But are there barriers to people who might want to be a psychiatrist in the military?
I think there's, I mean, Defence underwent a significant mind shift in, I think it was 2016, the White Paper came out, which actually established a role for psychiatry in uniform. And since then, Defence has employed three psychiatrists who now work full time. So one each in Army, Navy and Air Force. And they would like to employ more, but the difficulty now is attracting people to do that.
So there is some barrier there for?
Well, there's capacity now to take people. But the barrier, I suppose, is that Defence hasn't had psychiatrists for a long while. And so how do they then attract psychiatrists to come and work for Defence when they didn't want them for so long?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you again, doctor, for the help you've been providing to us. I think some of the questions I had may have been answered in the dialogue between you and Commissioner Brown just now. But I might just try to, for my own benefit, try to clarify some issues. In paragraph nineteen point one of your answers to our queries, you say that there was a pilot programme conducted in early 2020. How long does it last?
So the pilot programme was literally me trialling the G.I.S. programme on a group of new participants and the peers who had already been delivering the STAIR programme. And so we just did the one and then I incorporated their feedback into the content of what we actually then published in September of 2020.
But over what period of time did it last?
So the G.I.S. programme itself is 12 weeks. And so we ran two groups over, I think it was about four months.
In conjunction with that series of 12 sets of issues you set out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so two groups basically.
Righto.
In order to pilot it.
I understand that. You told Commissioner Brown that ideally it might be sometime around transition, but you don't want to overload people too much. Is it aimed principally at people with existing PTSD or who are at risk of PTSD?
No, I think, I mean, we've got a, we've got a generalized transdiagnostic intervention. And by that, I mean it's got a very broad focus. And so probably a fifth to a sixth of the participants have done it because they've gone, I'm not feeling so good about myself, I don't have a diagnosis, but I need to learn more about this stuff so I can actually improve. And that to me is ideal because we're talking about preventing things from deteriorating and helping people improve before they get bad. And so keeping that wide degree of people coming in, I think is really, really important.
It's fairly typical amongst witnesses approached with the issue of how they're feeling psychologically. We've heard to say, I'm fine.
Yes, because that's culturally appropriate.
Sorry?
That's culturally appropriate, socially appropriate.
Well, how do you get past that filter?
Because we put people together into a room and we normalize the fact that this is what we say and this is how we act. And, you know, the classic explanation for that is the way, you know, you look at a duck going across a pond. And you look at the duck on top of the pond and it's going like this and it's happy. But underneath, you know, the legs are doing this. And this is what we say to people, it's the face we put up. But is that true? And if you're lying to yourself, how long is that going to help?
How are you going to get them into the room?
Word of mouth and then by referrals from clinicians and then word of mouth and referrals from ex-service organisations.
Okay.
And that's the way we've been operating and it's working quite successfully for us.
Are there any similarities to Dr Koo's programme? It's a while since we heard from him, but my recollection is that it was group therapy, but under clinicians, not G.I.S.
And so that's where I argue the differences in this programme are. And because if we say group therapy, I can have a trauma focused psychotherapy as a group programme. I can have an Alcoholics Anonymous programme as a group programme. But what I'm talking about is the content is psychoeducation and skills based for emotional regulation and improved relationships. But it's actually delivered by those lived experience peers, not clinicians.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you, Dr Lane. We've heard from you a number of times and we're conscious of how much time we've called on you to provide for us. We're very grateful for your support about work.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions and I'm conscious of the time. Are there any issues, Mr Connor?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thank you for your time and patience listening to me, Commissioners, I really appreciate it.
Are there any issues, Miss?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms Cullen, any issues?
No, thank you, Commissioners, no questions.
Commissioner, might Dr Lane be released from the service?
Yes, thank you again, doctor, and you're released from the service. Yes, thank you again, doctor, and you're released from the summons to appear today.
Thank you, commissioners.
If there's no other issues, we'll adjourn till 10am tomorrow morning.
All rise.